Thank you. All right, let's go. Welcome to the July 1st, 2025 meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. They're on the shelves. If you're going to speak on any item today, please fill one out and then just hand your speaker request to Kenner. He'd be on the left of me here. Just hand them to him and he will hand them up to the dais. Okay? Thank you. Next, we'll have a roll call and determination of quorum. Commissioner Weifenbach?
Here.
Commissioner Druze?
Here.
Commissioner Dur?
Here.
Commissioner Roskinick?
Present.
Okay. Moment of silent reflection by Jerry Dur and the Pledge of Allegiance. And then we'll have the review of the and approval of agenda after that.
Good morning. And just a little thought and prayers for Mary Williams and her family at Wall. She lost her son this past week. That's a tough thing. Pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next, we'll have the review and approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Moved by Druze?
Second.
Second by Dur. Let's have, do we have to have a roll call for that, too?
No.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
All right.
All opposed, motion carries. It's unanimous, I forgot. Next is the consent items, item A through G. Is there any items from the public, A through G, that you would like removed? Is there any items from the commission, A through G, that you would like removed off the agenda? If not, could we have a motion for six, A through G?
So move.
Second.
Motion to approve items six, A through G. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the regular agenda items, items from the public per SDCL-125-1. Is there any items from the public that you'd like to speak on today? Boy, you're all fired up today. Okay, let's move on to item, regular agenda item eight, Pennington County Housing Redevelopment Commission, appointment of Tonya Young. If you'd come up, Ms. Tonya and Brian Akbak. So Tonya, could you tell us why you'd like to be on the Pennington County Housing and Redevelopment Commission?
I would like to be part of the commission to represent the tenants for Pennington County Housing. I do provide a unique skills as far as being a resident of the low-income housing. I'd be able to connect and relate with tenants, diverse group of individuals, and be able to communicate and be that segue from the resident to the commission board.
Thank you, Tonya. Do we have a motion for Ms. Tonya to appoint, Ms. Tonya, to the Pennington County Housing and Redevelopment Commission? Or any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion and a little discussion.
Okay, I'll have you discuss after the motion.
Okay.
Motion by Roskinick, second by Druze. Discussion, Commissioner Roskinick.
So, you know, when we did the interview, I gotta admit, I was pretty impressed because you mentioned that you read our 24 audit. And that takes a lot of dedication. So if you can handle our audit, I think you're gonna be a good member of the team. I just want to say thank you and welcome. I think we found the right person and I think we're very fortunate for that. Welcome to the team.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Tonya. Any other discussion?
Nope. You're gonna be working with a good team, so appreciate you coming on board.
And again, thank you, Ms. Tonya. There has been a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Tonya. Next, we'll have nine A, items from the auditor, annexation to Neck Yoke Valley Road District. We do have a speaker request. If you'd like to speak first, Ms. Cindy, that'd be fine.
Cindy Mueller, Pennington County Auditor. We do have the annexation requests, so we would like the motion to acknowledge the filing of the petitions and they will be holding an election at a later date for that annexation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cindy. We do have a speaker request from Mike Mueller. If you'd like to come up, sir, and state your name for us for the record.
Morning. Thank you, Madam Chair and fellow commissioners. My name is Mike Mueller. I am the president of Neck Yoke Valley Road District. One item I'd like to start with is thanks to the auditor's office for helping clarify the process here. We've never done this before. We've tried it in the past, but until we had contiguous properties, it was not achievable. So now we have a means, I believe, to get there. The letter in your packet does have a couple of items I think Dana was gonna try and get corrected, if that's not been done yet. One is, in the subject matter, it said consent agenda, and I know it's not consent. And then the bottom paragraph, it says Murphy Ranch Road, and I just want the record to reflect, this is Neck Yoke Valley Road, so for whatever that past letter was. You've been handed, I believe, late, and I was reminded Wednesday, four o'clock is the deadline for submission of information for the packet, but I didn't see these support letters that I had sent off to the auditor's office. The three neighboring properties, we wished to annex four properties, two owned by Wallas. We had letters of support signed at our annual district board meeting. And I submitted those with the resolution, but I used tax ID numbers for the resolution, so it wasn't the correct form. So we started over and I wanted to get knowledge on both the petition that's signed, and if you look at the map, all those landowners have signed on in both the petition and, well, the petition, we didn't get Jeremy Wall on the petition because he's in Saskatchewan on a fire call. So we didn't get his signature on the petition when we got that done. But in lieu of support, all those parties were at the annual meeting. We welcomed them into the neighborhood. They understand the operation. We've already seen a lot of construction traffic with two homes being built on the road, along the road. So my request to you, if there is not a statute or a rule that prevents you from approving this final today, because we've got everybody signed on that needs to be a part of this as petition and the support letters, and waive the effort, cost, and time needed to do an election, this is a pretty small issue as far as getting these adjacent properties added to our district. So my request to you would be, if we could just bypass the election because of everything you've got in evidence in your, in your hands, if we had to set up an election, we would do that, but it just seems like a waste when everything is in place and it's so small and tightly bound right now. So if you would please consider that, I would appreciate it. If we have to move forward as the rules or statutes, if somebody's got that and if Cindy knows about that or whichever, I'd be welcome to listen to that, too.
Ms. Cindy, can you come up? Ms. Cindy, do you know the answers to what Mr. Mueller is saying today?
I do not. I would have to go back and look. I know that we were basing it on the turning in of the petitions and then the requirement of the board to acknowledge the petitions and then set the election date, so.
Okay.
That's the process that we were following up on. So if you want to continue this to the next meeting, we can look into that.
You want to continue, it's Mike, to look into that, or are you willing?
I'd be okay. Past couple of years, and thank you, Madam Chair, should address you. We have tried this before with invalid attempts because we didn't have contiguous properties. Auditor said that, and now we've got the contiguous properties. So I do know July 1st is a cutoff date for acceptance, and that's why I was hoping today we could make this happen and then we could, you know, I don't want to put pressure on her. Obviously, I surprised her with that request this morning. I should've asked before now or communicated with Dana. But if it's still considered to be accepted this year for next year's tax benefit or levied benefit, we'd love to.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Druze?
I would suggest a motion which would set an election date, comma, if necessary, and ask the state's attorney's office to rule on this for us. That way, the motion could be passed, and then if the state's attorney says there has to be an election, I'd have to come back.
So, let me ask the question. So can you pass something without the election being done would be the question. So maybe, maybe we could table this and then have the state's attorney look at it and then bring it back today with that question. Kenner, if you could get ahold of the state's attorney, ask him the question on annexation. Do they have to have the election done? What else did you ask, Mike?
Madam Chair, I would propose, if the election is necessary, as Commissioner Drew said and Cindy comes back and says such, August 22nd seems like a good date. It's Friday night. We've got a couple of folks that are traveling during the week and they're home on the weekend, so Friday night might do that for us. I will be in the throes of the Central State's Fair overseeing a booth for the nine days or so of that during that stretch, but I think we can pull it off because it's gotta happen after August 11th, but before 60 days, so.
So I think you can still approve it. You can figure out from state's attorney, so you wouldn't have to table it if you had to have the election. If you don't, then the approval is good, and even if you do, the approval has to be done before then, otherwise you're null and void. Does that make sense?
Appreciate the consideration, yes. No, that's fine.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Druze? We can approve it and then we'll make sure we get back to Mike, Kenner, on if they have to have the election or not. Okay, Commissioner Druze? Or Dur?
Yeah, I believe they have to have an election. I'm gonna look it up, but I believe we can't approve an annexation because we're not the governing board. And so they're their own governmental entity, and the only thing that we do is set the election. And I believe, if we look this up, that we can't approve the annexation even if somebody has signed stating they want to come in, because I believe that is their own governmental entity, they have to vote on that annexation, not that we can approve an annexation. I don't believe we have that authority.
Ms. Cindy?
That is my understanding, but if you're gonna look that up.
So anyway, I'm looking it up now. What I would suggest, instead of making a motion on this, we just pick this up, you know, not too long down on our agenda, we just address it again.
We just table it.
Okay.
Is that okay? Is that okay with you, Mike?
We can live with that.
Okay. Motion to table, please.
So move.
Moved by Drew, or Druze?
Second.
Second by Dur. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mike.
So then we'll find the answer. Mr. Dur, are we having the state's attorney look this up? Mr. Kenner? Okay. And then we're gonna bring it back today. All right. So nine A was tabled. So nine B, please.
Yeah, the next item that I have is a new retail on-op sell-mop beverage and South Dakota farm license for Mountain View Lodge and Cabins.
Do we have a motion to approve or deny?
So move.
So moved by Roskinick.
Second.
Second by Druze. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
All right.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Are you still speaking there, Ron? Or Weifenbach?
Yep, I'm here. I'm just muting in between because it, so it doesn't interfere.
Okay. Do I have to hear his voice each time for approval?
Aye.
Maybe not, just kidding. Item 10, items from the sheriff. If you just introduced yourselves, sir.
Sure. Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff. Madam Chair, I appreciate you letting me come up for just a couple of minutes today. And the original item 10 I had, I'd like to pull, as Box Elder did, remove their request for the prison site, so I don't believe we need to make any comments on that.
Right.
But if I could just have a moment of personal privilege, for the last, for the last three years, an organization in town called South Dakota Strong has been distributing thank you to local law enforcement signs throughout our community. And if you drive around, even the Black Hills, Hill City, Keystone, New Underwood Wall, City of Box Elder, you'll see several of those signs up this week. They tried to have the signs displayed during the week of the Fourth of July, which is obviously one of our busiest seasons. And historically, this was, this came about to support law enforcement through a lot of the protests that we had in our communities, but this has just been a continuation, something that they've continued, and our staff really appreciate it. And I just thought, if you would be so generous as to allow me to give each one of you one of these signs today and maybe get a quick picture, so we could post it out on our social media and let our staff know how supportive the county commission are of all the work that they do in our community.
Commission, is that okay if we take five minutes to take a picture with the signs? Everybody okay with that?
I'm okay with it. Yep.
All right. That's okay. We'll take about five minutes and we'll help. Did you say aye, Ron? Weifenbach? All right.
Do we have a photo of him we can hold up?
Forgot to give us a photo of his head. Do you want it right here, Brian, by the plant? Let's do it up here, then.
Thank you.
Ron looks patriotic for it.
Try. He's his own sign today. Stand closer together.
Yeah. Sign the same, same height. Same height, Ron. All right, there, there you go again. Okay.
Take several, so we could make sure that Ron has his eyes open.
There's Ron.
How dare you?
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Take a good one.
Thank you.
Get your signs back there so they can see them today. All righty, thank you, Brian. We do appreciate the law enforcement, sheriff's office, police department, and a lot of the first responders, so thank you for letting us do that today. Next, we'll have 11A, items from the treasurer.
Good morning, commissioners. Annette Brandt, Pennington County Treasurer. I'm here before you with a continuation of my request for FTEs, three additional FTEs for our office from the June 17th meeting.
Thank you. So, discussion board.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskinick?
You know, we really talked a lot about this request the last meeting, and I like Ron, you know, Commissioner Weifenbach, that he said he likes just to see results, wants to get it done. And I think, you know, I want to, when I reached out to Jordan right after he started, I said, Jordan, welcome to the commission. Can you tell me the two departments in your mind that, you know, that we have the most issues with? And the sheriff's department was one and the treasurer's office was the other. And I think we have issues with each one being staffed and staffed in the right departments. And I've also been about compromise, and I talked to you and I said, I don't know about the three, but I would support the two for now. And Mr. Druze, he also explained, you know, if we did that, that there, and it didn't work, you know, there'd be other avenues that we could make, make it work. So I don't know what else to do. You know that I got a file that's got a lot of complaints, and every time you get those, you, you know, you feel that you gotta do something. I don't know if this is the right thing, but it's the only thing that I can see that's on the table right now that might make a difference. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Druze, please.
So I do support the three additional FTEs for the treasurer's office, and I believe that, you know, the, the issues that we're dealing with are not just with the line of the treasurer's office. A lot of it has to do with the new software that the state has initiated at their level, which has caused a slowdown of transactions being able to take place. And so we're gonna be dealing with these issues for a period of time. It has to go through the state for at least a year before everybody has their new tags, so we know that we're dealing with that for, for a full year. And this went into effect for the state, the 605 went into effect when, Annette?
February 13th, 2025.
Okay, so we know that we're gonna be dealing with it until at least then, and more than likely, it's gonna last beyond that point in time to get everything actually worked out. So I'm, I support the three additional FTEs, and if it comes down to it as a recommendation of over hire, which I don't really like, but I'm gonna support whatever brings some additional FTEs to the treasurer's office. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Druze? Commissioner Dur?
All right. So I, you know, I appreciate, you know, some of the information you provided in the, you know, request, and I'm gonna talk about a couple of things. One, you talk about the mail backup in the treasurer's office, and so how much of that is out-of-state mail? Because I've heard you talk about that. So doing the out-of-state titles and doing that out-of-state processing, is that something we're required to do?
Yes, it's in state statute. South Dakota's an open state, so anybody can license in South Dakota from other, other states.
Okay. And there's some counties that choose not to do that?
Yes. The treasurers choose not to do that.
All right. So, you know, it's kind of, it's one of those things, I get it, you know, but I would, if there was an opportunity to cancel doing the processing out of state, and because again, that's, I know we get revenue from that, but I don't believe the revenue offsets the additional request for the FTEs, if that's part of it. The 605 system that the state implemented is not your issue, it's their issue. It's just one of those mandates that comes down to the counties that we have to perform. And at the same time, then we have the legislators stating that we need to do more with less, but a lot of these mandates, just to, you know, for what your office is performing, come down from the state. So the 605 software program is not our program, it's just something that we have to deal with. But we're in the same boat as everybody else across the state in county treasurer's offices that are dealing with that. And I mentioned, the last time this was on the agenda, that currently we have more employees than Minnehaw County does, and the treasurer's office budget, I would remind the board, I believe it was in 2022, got six additional FTEs in 2022. In the last five years, and this is, you know, going, getting into this timeframe of post-COVID, the budget in the treasurer's office has gone up 91%. 87% of that is personnel costs that have gone up 87% in five years, not just additional FTEs, but some of the wage adjustments that we made that are not on you, those were made by the board. So, you know, it's just, we have, we're going through the budget process, you know, for 2026, and we had two days of budget meetings, and we had the state's attorney's office talk about the need for more attorneys and staff in the state's attorney's office. We had the public defender's office talking about the need for staff. I think there's, you know, other departments that, kind of a subnote in their budget, talking about adding staff. And as we're talking about adding staff and doing those things, it goes back to what our own commission office can't even get a handle on right now, and that's the total personnel in the county by job position, and that's what Kenner has been working on and trying to collate and get one point of all the information about all the employees we have. I asked the question about, you know, are we budgeting? So if we're asking for three additional FTEs, it's just three FTEs. Does that mean, you know, three high-level FTEs? Is that, you know, three entry-level FTEs? We need to be assigning new additional FTEs or all FTEs when we set the budget to a job title and having a job title that goes with that, so we know how many deputies we're funding, how many corrections officers we're funding, how many people in the auditor's office in these different offices by position that we're funding. And what I'm seeing in some of the growth in the personnel is the opportunity within departments, for those departments to increase. We approve an FTE at a certain level, and within a year, they can jump them up 12 steps on the scale. I'd like to see that policy go away for new hires. And so this whole thing just goes back to, it's not that I don't want to support the treasurer's office, it's that the taxpayers are telling us that they've had enough, even though they have concerns about, you know, the wait time in the treasurer's office. I'm still in the belief that there's some things that we could adjust to, you know, maybe help that. I think last meeting, you talked about making some adjustments in the queuing system. And so instead of, you know, maybe having a wait time between the next appointment, that you talked about how you're moving people up into that queuing system quicker and kind of getting back to the old process that we had. So, and for me, it's a financial thing, and I just can't support the request because it's about a, you know, if you go to the tax entitlement specialist, it's about $232,000 increase to the budget. And we have, we're working on the 2026 budget, so we're already making an adjustment in the 2025 budget. And I get when somebody says that they've not filled their positions to 100% throughout the year, but what I also hear, and this is more of a budget philosophy and not anything against your request, it's just my mindset on the budget and the finance. And the county, I believe, the budget has outpaced the growth of our public and their ability to pay. And I have no desire to continue to, you know, up that ante and specifically when we have passed a budget. And as we go through the budget process, I'm gonna highlight one slide that was put together at the last budget, where we approve a budget for 120 million, and we wind up spending 128 million because we do budget supplements throughout the year. And so I think we really need to look at the amount of budget supplements that we're doing and what the impact is. It just happens to be, the treasurer here is asking for, you know, additional funding in this fiscal year. Whether or not it can be handled internally or not is not really a point for me. It's that we have an overall request from all the departments going through the budget process about the need for additional FTEs, the need for software, the need for these things. And I would rather wait and rank all of those as we're going through the budget process and approve it for fiscal year of 2026, not adding to the 2025 expenditures, because I would imagine by the time we get to the end of the year, we're gonna have continually requests for budget supplements. And the current budget is 131 million. I would anticipate if we continue to do these budget supplements, it would be 135 million, 137 million. So it's just something that just goes against my grain fiscally, and I just can't support it. And it's nothing against you or your office, it's just I'm not there.
Mr., Madam Chair.
Hold on, hold on, Ron. Commissioner Weifenbach, you're next.
Thank you, Commissioner Hancock. I echo what everybody said here. When I started this conversation, it wasn't about adding new FTE. It was about the ability for the treasury department to over-hire, to fill as she went somewhat similar to what the sheriff does, that she, her cycle seems to be, you know, every six months that they're hiring new people in there. So if she has an ability right now to hot, over-hire, so when those people cycle through, she'll have a full staff. And I agree that I'm guaranteed, I'm not interested in having a budget that's increased or even at the same level it's at. I believe it's, the taxpayers have spoken, they've, they're, they're at the edge of their ability to pay, but my whole, if someone wanted to make the motion of, what I, I don't want to add FTE, I just want her to be able to hire extra people into her cycle, similar to what the sheriff's department does. And I think that HR can do that. And the reason I want to do that is because she is also an elected official, and she's saying this is gonna help her, you know, come to a conclusion on those lines because those lines have to be addressed. It's the one and biggest, biggest complaint, like Commissioner Roskinick had said, that is continually taking place right now. And we've, though we've been here a short period of time, we've made no, offered no solutions. I'm willing to look at this as a, as a temporary solution and then come back and obviously go through a whole department audit and see where we can find efficiencies and effectiveness and what we can do with the state, as we have been working on, because the state wants to hold us up with this, you know, getting machines in 2027, and all that stuff is nonsense in, when it comes down to, you know, one thing that we're supposed to do, serving the constituents. So if somebody... So somebody, my motion would, I'm not going to make a motion, but I would like, I would support her being, having the ability to over hire to fill the cycle. I don't want to see, there may be obviously an overlap or something, but it's better than right now of doing nothing. And then understanding that we're going to do a full department audit once we can get through this budget. Because if we wait, it's going to be, we're just kicking the can down the road a few more months. I don't think this commission wants to do that. I think they're, they're, they want to react and be able to give their constituents some level of an answer of what we are doing to help the treasury department resolve this issue. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Wyfembach. So I'm going to say one thing, I would ask for a continuance because I did not have time. Not that I didn't have time. Carol Bancroft, our HR director, is on vacation. And I told Annette that I would go check and see what all the rehire meant. Because I wasn't, I didn't think that over hiring was an issue. I just want to make sure that I have all my ducks in a row and see if that changes your budget, how that changes your budget, some other stuff. So I would ask for a continuance so we can look into this on the over hires. Because I, for me, I don't think I'm against the over hire because Commissioner Drews is right that every six months there's attrition. So I'm not against that. I just want to make sure what all that means. And I apologize, and I was going to call you this morning. And I was running late, I had to do my yard and stuff, so I apologize, Annette. So hopefully the commission gives me a couple of weeks. And then also I've been going into, with Annette, and I would like to keep continuing to go in and see the queuing system and some other stuff that I think she's been working on and making some good progress on. So if we could, I would ask for a continuance for two weeks to the next commission meeting to look into new hires with what those rules and regs are and how the sheriff does it and how the state's attorney does that as well.
Can I respond once? Thank you.
Hold on just a second. Is there a motion to continue? No motion to continue?
I'll move to continue.
Okay, move by Dur. Is there a second? I'll second it for discussion.
That's the next meeting?
Yes, please. Okay. So, okay, Commissioner Roskine.
So there's a couple of things. One thing, if you look at our mission statement, it says that Pennington County should provide quality public service. And so yeah, you've got to look at the numbers, but then you've got to look at the mission statement. And to me, that's my guidance, that we obviously have some kind of a problem in the treasurer's office. And I don't know that it's quality public service. Last week I asked if I could get a breakdown on per hour with each department. Now, this is rough, but it's still consistent methodology that we use through all the departments. And the treasurer's office has 26.5 employees. And the average hourly rate that is excluding benefits is $29.21. Now, the commission, on the other hand, they're at $40.21. Human resources is at 42.59. And fire is at 43.40. So when I sit there and look at this on a per unit basis, what your employees are getting per hour at 29, that's one of the lower in the 18 departments. I feel that, that I can support three additional employees at this time. And yeah, we could wait two weeks, but like Ron said, we're kicking the can down the road and really not solving the problem.
So I'll answer to that. So three FTEs, we, I don't think this is the time to approve three FTEs, full FTEs at this time until we look at the budget. It's smart budgeting. You wouldn't do it. And we just talked how the budget's been over like last year, eight million and some other areas. So I think that's bad to start doing another supplement at this time. The rehires, that's why I said I would be in favor maybe of the two rehires. I want to see what that means. So if, if Annette needs two rehires because she's losing people attrition, then that wouldn't change her budget. So that's why I'm saying that. I think we need to know what rehire or over hire, not rehire, sorry, Commissioner Drews, over hire means. And that way, does it change the budget? And we suffice everybody up here at that time, that financial, that financial thing doesn't become a financial thing for Annette. She doesn't increase her budget by the two rehires or the over hires. But I would like to know those answers. And like I said, we're not letting anybody else come up and, and do three FTEs, whether they're paid less or more. My issue is know the facts and all the facts before we decide to make a decision on the over hires as well. That's all I'm asking.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I'd make a motion that we allow treasurer's office to do two over hires immediately.
I'll second for discussion. That would be a substitute motion.
Okay, thank you. That'd be a substitute.
So what is your current staffing level now?
Twenty-six and three quarter.
And do you have any open positions?
We do not.
Okay.
We have three people on a waiting list, however. Normally, we have had an issue with people applying for the position. Couple of things, we, our entry level position that I'm asking for is an $18.37 entry level position with going from three to two and waiting another month, as we did with this discussion. I've no doubt that I won't be back here for a supplement in 2025. There's no additional money that needs to be in because of the attrition. The money's there now. Every month that you wait, it's less, of course, because of the hours that we're paying them through the end of the year. So there's no, there will be no supplement asked for, asked for in 2025. In 2026, Commissioner Dur is correct. There is an advancement in our office. They go from 18.37 and they go through a training process that what I've budgeted in 2026, if the FTEs are approved, is a $24 an hour tax entitle specialist. They, there should be three of them that are up to speed on that in, in 2026, if that's approved. If it's not approved, then, then through attrition, these three that I'm hiring right now, we, I just won't, won't backfill them though. So I would appreciate you truly considering letting me do the hiring while we have applicants to do it so I can get trained, trained staff in there. It takes three to six months to get them where we can put them up front and, in front of the customers helping out up front there. There's still plenty of, of work for them to do. We have baskets and baskets of mail. So I have no, no problem filling full time, full time hours for three of them.
So Ms. Annette. So this year there'll be no supplement, but would you be adding those? What if you over hired? What happens next year if you have two extra FTEs?
Again, if I have, if I have the two extra FTEs, I would have to put that in the 2026 budget because they are not in there. But the, again, if, if you're doing it as a over hire, I would just reduce the staff as attrition happened and not, not backfill. I'd have the fully trained staff. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
I do have the figures.
Then it wouldn't add your budget to any more people. You would have, you would be getting ahead of it. The main thing for me is to add more to your budget, make sure you're not supplementing. And then you're saying this on the camera, which is good without sounding rude, that if you have over hire next year, that because of attrition, you would let, you would just not fill those other two.
If they're, if they're approved as FTEs, my 2026 budget would need to go up. My 2025 budget does not. It's all, they're already, the money's there and now it's a month less because of when originally asked for it.
Well, for me.
Those are less hours. So I won't be back in front of you for a supplement for payroll at all, on paper, even if they.
So you already planned for 2026 to add anybody that had to go through the class on taxation. You would already have that in your 26 budget.
Right. Through attrition, in increments for the hours. And that's how I figured the hours too, which I think is why Commissioner Dur and my figures don't balance. It'd be a, if there were two employees added in FTEs, it'd be 133, 103 is what would be added to my budget. All the different line items are in there too.
Excuse me, with benefits?
Yes, with benefits.
Okay.
If we go three, it is 188, 78.
Okay, so here's my issue. If you're going to do over hires and you're going to put them in your budget for next year, maybe other people have been doing that too. And maybe for me, I'd like to look at if they over hired and kept them and kept that in their budget. Because then that budget should be reduced once those over hire. You see what I'm saying? So how do, how do you reduce a budget once you gave two FTEs? How do you reduce it 103, 103?
I'm, I'm not budgeting for over hires. It's through attrition is why I have it in 2025. Didn't budget it for 2025 for over hire. Wouldn't do it in 2026 either. If the, if people left, I just would not backfill. I, I just wouldn't hire another position or person in that for the 26 and three quarters.
But you say that I'm saying, if you did that, you still added 133 for next year, right? You had to.
If I do, if, yeah, if it gets approved.
And then if they don't, someone doesn't leave, you still have 133.
If, if the motion is to approve my over hire for two or three, whichever you decide, I would not be putting that in the, my request is still in there for FTEs, for two additional FT, two or three additional FTEs. But that's not been approved yet for 2026. I'm here to ask for over hire. That would be great. Actually, was counselled that it would be better to ask for FTEs so that, so that I would put them in the budget for 2026. But I am all for over hire for this year for two or three. I have it in the budget for three now because of attrition and how long it took to fill, fill the spots that we had before. Now I have people that are waiting on a waiting list, saying we do want to come and work in your office. But now I'm fully staffed and I can't, I can't.
So Annette, if, if I agree to this today, I will agree that there would be no budget supplement, of course, and, and raising of your budget this year. But I don't know if I would, because remember I said I'm going to go look into it, that if I would agree for it for 2026 over hire or additional FTEs. So if we wanted to try it this year and see if that works, because that gives you six months. In that time, we approve the budget in September, we'll be able to look at that by that time. That way, if you didn't want to continue it, we could move it forward. But I'll just give you a heads up. If the over hire, and I look into the over hire, not only in your department and others, and it's caused issues for 2026, I might change my mind on over hires, just to give you a heads up. Because like I said, I wanted to talk to Carol and how that's working in our budgets.
And, and just to be clear too, for the public, what we're talking about is over hire versus FTEs. FTEs are still in my request for 2026 budget. That still needs to be approved. The over hire is just for 2025. I have it in my budget in 2026. If my FTEs are not approved, then through attrition, those three over hires will take care of themselves.
Thank you, Ms. Annette.
Madam Chair.
Discussion, Commissioner Drews.
So, you know, treasurer's office generates the revenue for the county. They generate a lot of revenue for, for other areas too, including, including the state. I don't think we can compare ourselves to Minnehaw County. As we heard two weeks ago, Minnehaw County has many more of the kiosks where we have, I think, three total. And we've also been informed that the state has said, we're not going to provide Pennington County any more kiosks until sometime later because they would need to take it to the 2026 legislative session, get approval for it, and then put in an order. And I don't expect that those are turned out in 30 days or so. So it's going to be sometime before we can expect to receive other kiosks. I was with some people from Sioux Falls this last weekend, asked them how they renew their tags in Minnehaw County. Two of them responded as saying they use kiosks. They're convenient. They are at convenience stores for them down there. So it's hard to compare what we are set up compared to theirs at this point in time. Because the state was obviously very amenable to their requests or maybe didn't, maybe they didn't even request them. The state just provided them that many additional kiosks. I would encourage you to support providing Annette with additional employees at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Drews. Discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Dur.
Just to follow up on what Commissioner Drews said. So yeah, it's quite clear that, you know, the state favors East River. So that's a valid point. The issue still that I have is when we, you know, talk about an over hire. Okay, when you're talking about an over hire and you're 100% filled in your FTEs, you're talking about adding FTEs. And then my question, Annette, and what is your, what's your attrition rate so far this year?
Ms. Annette.
I don't, I don't actually know how to, how to answer that.
So how many, how many?
I've hired five new ones.
This year?
To keep fill, yeah.
Okay, what is your normal rotation on, you know, fill rate?
We usually, if we lose one, we wait until we've got two because it's so time consuming to start hiring. We've switched that now. And in the future, we're going to be utilizing HR to do that hiring process. So it usually takes me three to four months to get somebody hired in a position that's left, if that's what you're asking, I'm sorry. And then it still takes three to six months to get them trained where they're working with the public, so.
Good. And so getting back to the other point, every department has open FTEs at some point in time. Look at the jobs, you know, that are on the county website. Corrections, you know, sheriff's office, state's attorney's office, et cetera. I believe that every department would, and maybe they already do and we don't know it. So I believe every department would say, you know, I know somebody's going to be leaving in six months. And so therefore, you know, I've got to over hire because I know somebody's going to be leaving. And the only time that I would really be keen on an over hire is if it's some very technical position that only one or two employees are trained on doing. And you've got to fill that, you know, timeframe and make sure you get that training. My whole problem is not with the treasurer's office. It's not with, you know, an over hire adding FTEs. It's about the fact that we don't have a process in place to get a handle on this and address it in the organization. And so we're looking at these things and I, you know, I go back and I mean, I've studied the budget history and looked at this. These have been incremental decisions made during each commission meeting that is added. Two, when you talk about revenue collection that the treasurer's office, yeah, all the, all the pennies and all the dimes and everything flows through the treasurer's office. And, you know, 56 million of that is coming from our property tax. And so when we talk about generating revenue, that is the people paying and it's coming from them. That's the topic right now is about we're burdening government. The taxpayers are saying, you know, I'm tapped out, I can't do anymore. I believe in the last five years, owner occupied has gone up about 44%. And so for me, when you talk about service and getting back to Commissioner Roskine, I think he gave a number last meeting of about 23 minute wait time in May to get to, you know, a basic, you know, renewal. And, and again, we have the machine sitting out front and there are times I see people use it. But, and they can only use it for certain things. I get that. So unless we have a policy that addresses over hires in the county, I'm not willing to support doing these one-on-one without a comprehensive review as to what the impact is in the organization. So I'm still a no.
Thank you. Couple of things. So I went to the treasurer's office and I was sitting in line and I didn't tell anybody who I was. So I went from the middle of it or to the end of it, to the other side, which it doesn't matter where you're sitting, it's by the kiosk. And I like to hear what people have to say. So bottom line, it takes them about 15 minutes for taxes in line, is what I've saw. And then for titles, it could take up to three hours, just depending. And it could take an hour for one person to go through in, in Annette's office to figure out the title because they have to call all over the email. One time I sat there with Janice or Janet in her office and it took us about 35, 40 minutes because she had to keep calling different entities to make sure everything was okay. So the difference for me is the taxpayers are also saying those lines suck. Okay, let's be up straight. So if it's the taxes, you're talking about property taxes, it's a So, um, if it's the taxes, you're talking about property taxes, it's a little bit different for a line than you're talking about titles. So, um, she's trying to figure that out through a queuing system. Again, the lines have been there forty years, so let's try something different. Um, out of all the departments, hers is the most complaint system, not because Annette served, Annette personally and her people, it's the line. So if we have to over hire and see what that happens, so we have enough people that know how to do the titles, because the taxes, uh, they seem to be able to go up there pretty quick with the training. It's the titles, and I can tell you why. Like I said, forty-five minutes, and I had a, um, the Treasurer's Office Department had Janet in the room with me, um, and it wasn't mine, she just showed me the process. So then they have to do the mail through the titles the same way. So a title, no matter if you're sitting there and coming to, um, Annette at the front desk, or you're getting it in the mail, it still takes just as long. So, um, bottom line for me is if the over hires are gonna make that difference, and she can get those people trained and be efficient and effective, we know that from any business, be efficient and effective, but the over hires compared to other departments, they haven't had the lines and the complaints like Annette's office is by trying to sit in line, and if we can get them rehired, get them through that process faster and keep them because of attrition, because we already are ahead of that game, I'm good with that. That's just my comments, the main thing is no supplement, and to move forward in twenty-six, let's look at the policies, let's look at how we do it. Let's see it's how it's working for other departments, and then we'll also know if we're gonna keep doing it in twenty-six. So, um, I'm okay giving her that chance. Commissioner, um, Wyfembach, your comments, please?
I'm ready to vote.
Are we ready to vote, Commissioner? Okay. We're voting on the substitute, which is a approval of two over hires for the Treasurer's Office at one hundred and thirty-three, one oh three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
So we have to do roll call. Commissioner Drews?
Aye.
Commissioner Dur?
No.
Commissioner Wyfembach?
Aye.
Commissioner Roskinek?
Aye.
And Commissioner Haddock is a aye, four to one. Thank you, Ms. Annette, for two, for two.
Madam Chair.
There was approval of two over hires, Ms. Annette, for one thirty-three, one oh three.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Annette. Commissioner Roskinek?
So, yeah, Jerry mentioned, uh, I believe our total projected revenues for Pennington County for the two thousand twenty-six budget is one hundred and twenty-six million eight forty-one, four twenty-one. And then relative, what part of that is real estate taxes or projected real estate taxes? And that revenue is roughly fifty percent of that, so, uh, obviously, you can see fifty percent, uh, that isn't really, it'd be nice if we, we could, I don't want to say in, increase in taxes, but to me, it's like finding another source of revenue for the county besides taxing people to death, and, uh,
Thank you, Commissioner.
Hopefully, some of that gets figured out in period this, uh, next session.
Thank you, Commissioner Roskinek.
Thank you.
If we could, we're gonna take a minute, we're gonna take nine a off the table if we could, do we have a motion?
So move.
Moved by Drews, second by Roskinek, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. So, um, that is for, to figure out the elections, do we have an answer for that, Commissioner Dur?
Yes, we do. I have a short note from our State's Attorney, must have an election, Laura.
Okay.
So they have to have an election, so we'll need a motion to set that election. And was there a date proposed?
It was, I think he said he had to have it before August, where'd Mike go? August?
Good. I'm gonna go ahead and, are we back to that item?
Okay, yes, night, yep.
All right.
Annexation to Neckyoke Valley Road District.
All right, I'll make a motion to acknowledge the filing of petition signed by twenty-five percent of the eligible voters in the area to be annexed, and twenty-five percent of the eligible voters in the existing district, and the resolution approving the annexation request by the Road District and to set an election date on the question of annexation to Neckyoke Valley Road District, not more than sixty days from this date.
Motion by Dur?
Second.
Second by Drews. Any other discussion, Ms., um, State's Attorney, Ms. Laura, did you, hey? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, if someone, Kenner, would get back to, um, what's his name, Mike Mueller, on the action we took today and what that action was, please? Thank you. Next, we have Buildings and Grounds, your name, sir?
Good morning, Commissioners Davis, Purcell, Director of Buildings and Grounds.
Okay.
Today, I am seeking, uh, a bid award for the jail annex roof replacement. Um, as you know, in executive session a few weeks back, I, I gave you a budget of roughly six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the majority of the bids fell within that range, except for one low submission. Um, the, the low submission was on a PVC roofing system, um, and with subcontracted labor, so when you do subcontracted labor on projects like this, you typically save a lot of money. Um, on projects in the past, though, when, when I've, I've been a part of subcontracted labor, especially on roofing projects, um, it's less consistent, you know, installation, increased risk of ownership, um, some other items that I labeled there. So I strongly urge the, the commission to go with my recommendation of an EPDM system, which is essentially a rubber roof. Um, it's much thicker membrane, um, compared to PVC, um, they do last a lot longer, uh, as well. It's typically thirty to forty years, to put it in perspective, I did include a aerial view in there for you to kind of show our downtown campus. Uh, the dark colored roofs are the EPDM roofs. Um, on our courthouse, it is twenty years old, we've had zero issues. On the care campus, it is over thirty years old, and we are just now starting to see some deterioration. Um, yeah, so the, the courthouse is the upper-left building there, um, in the northwest area, and then care campus is down on, uh, the southwest. And again, those, uh, the care campus has just now, after thirty years, started to show a little bit of deterioration. Uh, to put it in perspective, the jail annex roof is the P, is currently PVC membrane, and it is not yet twenty years old, and has already failed.
Care campus have, um, insurance on it to cover it?
It's not hail damage related, it's just becoming unadhered, is all it is. So, um, but we, it's just one small corner on the care campus, right now, we're taking care of it, but that is in my five-year replacement plan to get the care campus roof done as well. Um, but again, I'm seeking award, um, to low roofing, um, as well as some, um, contingency spending in there, uh, because we do not know how much insulation and roof backing is damaged because of the moisture that has seeped into that roof, so.
Are you looking at low roofing instead of All-American roofing?
Correct.
Okay?
Yep.
And you didn't take the low bid because?
So we're taking the low bid on the EPDM alternate, is what we're doing. Um, the only reason, um, I would, I, I've never worked with All-American Roofing. Um, I believe they're a really very good contractor in town, so it is nothing against them, it's just when I've, I've worked with subcontracted labor on projects before, it basically means they bring in a group of people to do the labor for them that aren't necessarily professionals on the application. So whereas, uh, that's why you see that, that discretion in the bid tab of such a low bid for the, and, and, and All-American quoted PVC membrane, whereas low roofing, you can see the alternate one, uh, if you zoom in there a little bit, um, alternate one is for the increase for EPDM. And then, um, alternate two is, uh, we have a couple smaller adjacent roofs that are connected to the annex that need to get, uh, replaced as well, so. But again, I did estimate this at about six hundred thousand dollars, um, and you can see a lot of those fell within that range outside of that, pretty much that really low bid there, so.
Okay, motion or discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskinek?
So, Davis, when you look at the quality of the product, and you got good, better, and best,
Mm-hmm.
and you do that, if you look at it in mil, uh, thickness and mil ratings, could you just kind of give an overview what good would be, what better would be, and then best would, I assume that's what we're looking at?
Yeah, well, we're not, we're not quite at best yet, but we're at really good.
Okay.
Um, I would say good is sixty mil, better is eighty mil, really good is ninety mil, which is what we have now for the EPDM. Anything over that, um, is pretty subjective. Um, it's, the, the biggest thing here is that EPDM holds up really well, especially in our downtown campus to hail. And ninety mil EPDM synthetic rubber can withstand up to two-inch hail, uh, for a consistent amount of time. Um, and so, and it's, and it's also better for expansion and contraction as well, which, because we get really, really high temps and really, really low temps. So again, that's where EPDM thrives, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Dur?
I'm gonna move to award the jail annex roof replacement project to low roofing in the amount of five hundred and forty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty, which includes a base bid and alternatives one and two for a fully adhered EPDM roof system. Authorized funding from the accumulated building fund and improved spending authority up to six hundred thousand to account for petition, potential unit price adjustments related insulation and roof backing replacement as identified during construction.
Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Motion by Dur, second by Roskinek, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item thirteen is items from chair, commission members, do we have any items that we'd like to discuss? Or that this is a time not for your committees, but something that you'd like to bring up for us to look in for the future, or something that, um, you're concerned about?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews?
So, going back a little bit to the Treasurer's request, I would suggest that this commission take a position and write, uh, to the state, to, uh, Revenue Department, to, uh, encourage them to look to see if they have any of these kiosk machines that are not being utilized to the fullest extent, that we may be able to transfer over to Pennington County.
Thank you, Mr. Drew, good idea. Commissioner Roskinek?
Oh, I'm good.
Any other discussion? All righty.
Good.
Items from planning and zoning, um, we're not quite there yet, do you want to do executive session first? Did I? Oh, I did.
TIF resolution.
Sorry, items from Commission Office, TIF application resolution, this is the opportunity, asking for a response from the commission board. Do we have any response that we'd like to, uh, put on record for this TIF?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews?
I think we should, um, respond, uh, that, uh, the amount of TIFs that the city has been, uh, proposing within recent months, uh, seem to be way out of range of what previous TIFs have been proposed, and give them an understanding of what this does as far as the county is concerned when we go to budget.
Mr. Drews, I agree, um, we need some real numbers of how many TIFs you have, how many that's affecting us. I know Cindy, um, usually gives us those numbers, I don't know if she can at this point, um, but the ones that have been approved so far, she should be able to, and then send that to them and how much that affects, uh, the county. So I agree, um, that we can get that. Um, I don't know if Cindy can get those numbers or how that's calculated, uh, how much that, um, would affect the county's budget and how much it really does affect our budget.
Well, I had sent a memo to, uh, Jordan, uh, our administrator person, uh, asking if the city could provide an overlay of the TIFs on a current Rapid City map, so we can see how much is already in place for TIFs and what is being proposed at the current time, so we can see the, 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 see and make a determination what those property values really are at this point in time.
Yeah.
So Kenner, you got that down? Okay, Commissioner Drews or Dur?
Yeah, just my comment on that, yeah, it seems like about a other week, and we just got one here in the last couple of days, another TIF, you know, application from the city, uh, you know, talking about it. So anyway, it seems like, you know, they're dropping TIFs like pennies, so, um, yeah, good point. We need to get a handle on those, because it does have an impact. It's a lot of work for the auditor's office to, again, go into those districts, recalculate the boundaries of those TIFs, and do that calculation when it, when, uh, we send it off to the state, so. It's a lot of, uh, internal paperwork in time by the county.
I agree, and I, I'm one that like TIFs, but the way they're doing TIFs anymore, it was for infrastructure. It went from infrastructure for me into housing and portable housing and some other stuff that just went way out of line. So if you're talking infrastructure, water, sewer, drainage, things like that, makes sense, because those over, um, when you oversize the infrastructure, you're doing anything else, it starts, or I should say, if you don't oversize the infrastructure, it starts affecting the taxpayers in a way that, uh, is a huge amount. So, um, I agree with both, uh, Commissioner Drews and Commissioner Dur. Um, they're being overused, and they're being overused for areas that, uh, makes it less, how about, it's supposed to be more of a competition or a, uh, maybe not a competition, but a, when you help one developer and you don't help the rest, and they call it, um, the working people or the, um, low income and things like that, guys, um, you should be able to do that by yourself. If you need the infrastructure, uh, in different areas, like we have used in the county, um, we know that from Rapid Valley, I think that's, uh, totally on board, but like I said, now you're starting to cost the taxpayers money for a, basically, who can get a TIF faster in low-income housing or something else. And, uh, just a note, um, we had one of the low-income people that got a lot of the money for, um, their low-income housing. They have now, uh, pulled out, and, um, are now not pulling out, I should say, but now they're not gonna be here as managers, they're gonna find some managers to do their low-income housing. So, um, that tells you right there, um, they got the money, they're good to go, they buy this stuff, and then you gotta remember, in ten years, it doesn't have to with those tax credit, it can be turned over to be regular housing, not low-income housing anymore. So not only did they not fulfill their promise that they were gonna stay here and do all their, um, amenities that would help the low-income housing, they're also, um, having somebody else run their business, and then like I said, in ten years, it won't be low-income housing. So you gave them a heck of a break through the state and through some of the, uh, people in Rapid City that, uh, wanted, um, these people to be good, which I appreciate, but again, um, be careful, we've been saying this, and Alan Solano also, from the, uh, Rikirvich Foundation, he has now moved from there. He did a big thing on it that in the next few years, all these tax credits are gonna come up, and all this low-income housing's gonna come up, and they don't have to do low-income housing anymore. So it's gonna be huge, um, and again, um, I don't know what's driving all the TIFs more than ever, but like I said, I do like TIFs for infrastructure.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskinek?
So, in our packets, you know, we got that, uh, application information from the city, and so it says, "Application materials total, one hundred and twenty-three pages, and include financial maps." And, uh, if we got any, they said, "I can get back, uh, there's a, a form that I can fill out and send it to the city." That's just not working. Uh, who's gonna read one hundred and twenty-three pages, are we the, and sit there and say, "Does that benefit the county?" Uh, I think the applicant should be here in person, and they should have the person to put the TIF together to look at the pros and cons, because there's always, to me, there's gonna be cons if there's pros, so. I, I don't know why we even get these in the packet, because I'm not gonna read one hundred and twenty-three pages. I've got other county duties that are more important than trying to figure out if a TIF is a, a good thing or a bad thing.
Commissioner Wyfembach, do you have comment?
Yes, Commissioner Haddock, I do, and I, I echo the, the thoughts of a lot of the commissioners here. I've been in on these things, and one of the problems is the, the city council members that are passing these things completely do not understand what they've even done. And I think you alluded to that when you talk about oversizing, road sizing, just like what could have happened if the county had not taken over that TIF on, uh, on, on the Foil Park or, uh, Twilight Drive and that area where the, the future taxpayers would have been, uh, saddled with the burden of, you know, widening roads, uh, putting in streetlights, extra streetlights and things like that. I would suggest that at some point, we as a commission, put a resolution together, ask that they educate themselves on how that all comes to play when they recommend a TIF and they don't ask for oversizing, they don't ask for, how does the drainage affect the rest of the community? How does the traffic affect the rest of the community? Because literally, that's what the TIFs were for, they weren't meant to just give basic infrastructure. They were meant to make it work for the future of the community. And then I would also suggest, and I know this is out there, but it, it, that the city puts together a resolution about- together a resolution about, that we can send to the state legislators that say that the county should be made whole on these TIFs. The school district's made whole on them, the county should be made whole on them through their sales tax. Or, you know, they can, so whatever the county misses out on the sales tax or on the property tax, the city should return to the county in the form of sales tax. Or, and, and/or suggest that the state legislator add a sales tax to offset the increased property taxes that are happening. So that'd be my two cents, and I know they may just shirk that off, but it shows the seriousness to the citizens when they pass all these TIFs and they have no clue what they just did to the future generations, which we are now trying to take care of. So thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Board. So I think, Kenner, you have enough information. Basically, the consequences of the TIFs, what those costs are, would be a nice letter, and then we can bring in as a resolution if that's okay, Board. And then at the next meeting, if we could, and then make a motion to send that to the city council. Everybody okay with that?
That one's good.
All right.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner Wyfembach. Thank you for the comments, everybody. Planning doesn't start till ten-thirty on record. Do we want to do executive session now and move that forward?
We could if the sheriff's available.
If Joan would call the sheriff, that could move forward. And then we'll take fifteen minutes for that and then come back.
He's good.
Okay, he's here. Okay. So move to go an executive session for public safety, SDCL one-twenty-five dash six C. Is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by Druze, second by Ross Connect. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Joan, can we put Ron in executive session on the speaker? Okay, Ron, we'll put you in executive session. Joan will tell you how. Thank you.
I thought you were going to say put him in.
Thanks, guys.
I'm here, Chair.
What's that?
I said, "I'm here," so.
Thank you, Ron. Next, we're going to items from planning and zoning. This is a planning, regular agenda item. We're going to go to item A right away. Am I correct? And that's a request to refund penalties. Kevin Anderson. Andreessen. Andreessen. There you go.
Chris Sacks, senior planner. So yes, this is a request to refund penalty fees for Kevin Andreessen. Basically, what happened was he purchased a property at two-three-seven-nine-five Chuckwagon Court. He also purchased an adjacent property. I believe he came in to do a, like a vacation home rental on the property. And at the time, it was discovered that the existing building, they finished a basement and they built some structures on the property without building permits. So he was required to get building permits and upgrade his septic system. With that, he was charged penalty fees with that. So he's just requesting those penalty fees back since he wasn't the owner at the time when those were built.
Okay. Thank you, Cody. Do we have Kevin Andreessen here? If he would come up? If he's not, he's not here? Do we have a motion by the board or discussion?
Mister, or Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
So if I, if I read this right, my first question would be, did he go through a legal representative such as an attorney or a professional realtor?
Commissioners, Brittany Molliter, planning director. Kevin Andreessen is a realtor.
Okay. So with that being said, normally, there's all kinds of documentation that you, that goes through the title company, if I understand it, and, and there's, it's vetted so that you kind of know what you're buying, and after you buy it, you bought it. So I don't know that I, as a commissioner, that I could grant this, but I would think that that's more of a civil matter unless, between the buyer and the seller. That's just my opinion. I'm open for other opinions by other commissioners.
Oh, I almost said chair for. Unfortunately, I don't think all the realtors know the rules and regulations and penalties on structures or anything. I don't think most people do until it happens to them. I don't think it's just realtors, I think it's people in general. So for me, he bought, if the property was bought that way and then the penalties didn't come till later, for me, I would request we give him the seven-seventy-six back, only because, like I said, it says, "Staff noted several structures on the property located at two-three-seven-nine-five Chuckwagon Court were built without building permits prior to Mr. Anderson purchasing the property." Wouldn't matter for me if it's a realtor or not, it has to do with, I always ask, did you know prior to the purchase about the building permits? And he wouldn't have unless he was going to change the use or do something else with it. So that wouldn't be just Mr. Anderson, that would be most of the people that asked for penalties that didn't know that they needed building permits on stuff they had bought. So those are my thoughts. Commissioner Dur.
How many of these do you come, we just did one here a few weeks ago, and I think we gave the fees back, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. How many of these do you see a year typically?
Um, we probably see one a month or so, maybe, one every other month. It's not super frequent. It just depends. In most cases, it's usually after-the-fact situations like this, when they weren't the ones that actually did the work.
Okay. And then a question, is there any ability to go back on the original party and assess the fees to them?
We cannot. They would have to do that through civil action.
Okay. Have we ever done that?
No, because it would have to be a civil action between the purchaser and the buyer.
All right.
Or the purchaser and the seller, sorry.
Thank you. And again, these are penalty fees, not fees. They had to pay for those permits to be issued, so they did pay their due diligence on those fees for building permits that weren't on the buildings. These are the penalty fees. Commissioner Wyfembach, do you have?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I do. I mean, it, here's, I have to echo what Commissioner Ross Connect said on this one. Though I don't, though I feel bad for people when they buy a property that's not been properly permitted, I mean, they got to come back through, pay the fees, I get all that, but this would be a good argument for just do it and ask for forgiveness because they're going to get forgive the fees. When you buy a property, you are subject to all the liens and fees on there. You buy title insurance. I would say this would be, you know, it would be hard to, I think because of our, our process, it would be hard to see that it wasn't, that it wasn't permitted, but that's still not the county's fault. And because this, when we do this, this just gives people an opportunity to say, you know, just build it and don't worry about it. We'll just pay the, pay the permit fees, because some of these things may not, should may, possibly may not have had to been done. I'm not understanding if the planning department is recommending that we refund them and why that would be when, the fact is that if you're not going to enforce the law, then just, let's just get rid of it and just say, you know, if you don't build it, if you don't have a permit, when you build something, when we find out about it, it's just fine, because that wreaks havoc for everybody. I think Commissioner Ross Connect was right, that it's a civil matter, it's not a matter for the county. So that's what I have to say on that for now.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I have never went to a sale that I was going to buy something and asked, "Did you get a permit for that shed? Did you get a permit for that carport?" I've never, I've never heard anybody go buy something and ask somebody if they had permits for them before they sold it to them.
Commissioner Hackock, I'll just, I'll weigh in on that. And that's the reality of it. When you're a realtor, you know, that's part of your job is to help that person, you know, realize that. If you go buy a car and you don't read the contract, you just sign it, you're going to be, you could be in a lot of, you know, hot water. And this is the same. I mean, the, when you buy a house and it has all these things on it, I mean, if you've ever watched any house flipping show or anything like that, you'll see that these people are looking for these types of things, you know, is this all permitted? You should probably realize that if you buy it. So it is part of the process. And I will, I will, I will do whatever the planning department wants to do, but in the future, I would say, if you don't have a building permit and you, and you build it and then ask for forgiveness later, be prepared to pay. And these people knowingly built these without a building permit. So, thank you.
Thank you. And it depends on when they were built. But it also says, "Staff supports refunding the penalty fees as the property owner, Cameron Anderson, did not build the structures in question." I agree with the staff, because this isn't just the first time we've done this. We've done it many times before when the, doesn't matter, like I said, who the person was and what they did for a living, it had to do with, it was built prior and the person before then, again, should have paid those fees. And I think legally, you should pay the regular fees, but the penalty fees, I believe the staff is correct, that, like you said, you buy the property as is, I get it, but I don't know too many people, and my husband's a builder as well, and you know that, Ron, that he walked up to the people and said, "Before I build anything else, do you have building permits on that other stuff?" Unless, he would ask him if he was going to add on to something, he would ask him. Other than that, he wouldn't have asked him on the rest of the properties if they had building permits, so.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Druze.
I'd make a motion that we follow staff's recommendation and refund the penalty fees of seven-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars to Mr. Andreessen.
Thank you, Mr. Druze. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Wyfembach?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. You're four against.
I'm four.
Okay. So we do have to do this by roll call? Commissioner Druze.
Aye.
Commissioner Dur.
Aye.
Commissioner Ross Connect?
Aye.
Commissioner Wyfembach? You said aye, Commissioner Ross, Wyfembach earlier?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, sir. And I say aye, so it's a four to one. Fees will be paid back. Thank you. Thank you, staff, for your recommendation and looking into that. Next, we will be on item B, the preliminary plan, COPPL twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-six. Todd and Lori Hansen.
Morning, Commissioners. Jason Thonison, Assistant Planning Director. Gen item B is preliminary plan, COPPL twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-six, to subdivide and create Sagebrush Track One and Sagebrush Track Two of Haywood Estates. The applicants are Todd and Lori Hansen. Location of the property is one-three-eight-four-six Highway forty. Access is off Highway forty, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. The board has seen this back in May. The applicants did come forward with a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezone and a variance for a lot size, and they were approved on May nineteenth. The applicants are proposing to create these two tracks, and staff recommends approval with conditions.
There a motion or discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Been a motion to approve prelim plan with four conditions, COPPL twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item C, please.
Chris Sacks, senior planner. Item C is major planning and development amendment, COPU oh-eight dash zero-zero-one-zero. It's to amend an existing planning and development to reduce the common area and increase residential lots in the planning and development. So basically, what's happening, currently, they're allowed one-hundred-and-forty-eight residential lots. They're maxed out with that. And this property in the south is currently being subdivided through the county. And then this property on the northeast corner is also being platted through the city of New Underwood and through us. So they need to amend the PUD to allow more residential lots. And then the common area is required eighty acres right now. All PUDs require common, common area. Right now, they have sixty-four-point-four. So to accommodate that, they're reduced, they don't want to add any more common area, they want to keep the existing, so they're reducing the minimum requirement to sixty-four-point-four because there's several common lots that equal out to that. And then the only other condition that would change as well would be with allowing one-hundred-and-fifty-four residential lots, that there's allowed one-hundred-and-fifty-four stick-built, single-family residences. So with that, staff is recommending approval of major planning and development amendment, COPU oh-eight dash zero-zero-one-zero, with conditions, with the planning commission's concurrence.
Thank you, Cody. Do you have a motion or discussion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve planning commission recommendation, major planned unit development, PU eight-zero-ten, with following nineteen conditions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Wyfembach, for answering. Item D is the mining permit, COMP twenty-five zero-zero-one, Sixty-three Industries LLC.
Yep. So it's to allow a mining operation on the subject property. It's located at the corner of two-twenty-fifth and one-fifty-first Avenue. The current size of the property is six-hundred-and-forty acres. That's the entire property, not what they're proposing to mine. Current zoning is agriculture district, and the existing land use would be agriculture. Access is off two-twenty-fifth and one-fifty-first Avenue, and there is special flood hazard area on the property and floodway. So the zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the planning commission may consider in the review of conditional use permits. Those are on the screen. It does not appear that this meets those requirements as increased traffic on the road. The request should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, general offer. However, the mining operation will increase traffic on the roads that do not meet Pennington County Ordinance number fourteen standards. To clarify that comment, when you have a vacant land and then you're adding trucks to that property, those roads on one-fifty-first and two-twenty-fifth, that's where we're talking about traffic increasing, not necessarily two miles down the road. It's just off one-fifty-first and two-twenty-fifth. Mining operations by their very nature create nuisances such as loud noise and airborne particles, such as dust, visual intrusions, such as stockpiles and heavy equipment. Current zoning and future land use for Pennington County identifies the surrounding property as agriculture. The mining operation should not impede the development and uses of other property, of this property. The proposed mining operation will take access off one-fifty-first Avenue, which does not meet Pennington County Ordinance fourteen standards. The highway department stated an approach, the approach for two-twenty-fifth Street would need to be removed. There's no turn lane on one-fifty-first Avenue to accommodate increased truck traffic to the property. The current zoning district is agriculture. A mining permit is requested to, is requested use within that agriculture district with a mining permit. Future land use of the property is rural residential, commercial and agriculture district. Although future land use for the proposed mine is identified as agriculture, another large portion of the subject property is identified as rural residential. Consistent development of these areas may be impede, may be impeded by adjacent, the adjacent mining operation. And then the zoning ordinance lists seven, or five criteria that the planning commission and the board of commissioners may consider in reviewing the mining applications. These are pretty much just the same as the other criteria, and I'll go a little deeper in the analysis for it. So with the proposed operation plan, they're proposing to go from June twenty-fifth to June twenty-fourty-five. The applicant stated at the May twelfth meeting, that it's an estimated timeframe for five years. I'll let the applicants explain the difference for their application, as that's what they stated. They're going to mine sand and gravel, approximately one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand tons, go to a depth of zero to forty feet. Again, the applicant stated at the May twelfth, twenty-twenty-five planning commission meeting that the depth of the excavation would be no more than fourteen feet. I'll let him explain that as well. Number of trucks per day was not provided to the planning department by the applicant. They'll use excavators, dozers, scrapers and crushers. No blasting will occur. They are proposing to put berms on the subject property, so they're proposing these on the out, the berms are on the outside. The application narrative states that the surface and groundwater will not be affected due to the following. There's a fifty-foot buffer that'll be implemented, and ground penetrating radar does not show any water at the depth of fifteen feet. But an environmental assessment was not provided to the planning department. Uh, but an environmental assessment was not provided to the planning department, uh, to verify that. Uh, there are, there's one well on the subject property, uh, with a static water level of seventeen, uh, feet. Uh, there's not to be, there's not appear to be any neighboring wells within fifteen hundred feet. I believe the closest one, which would be this one to the mining operation was seventeen hundred feet. And then static water levels in the area based off of these wells are anywhere from seventeen to fifty feet. Uh, they did submit a reclamation plan. They stated that only ten to fifteen acres will be disturbed at a time. Um, that's on top of their ten to fifteen acres for their stockpile area, um, so approximately thirty acres. Uh, they are proposing to recontour the land and reclaim it back to pasture land. They have submitted a stormwater permit through our office and the Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources. They're proposing erosion, check dams, berms, vegetative buffers, vehicle trap out, vehicle track out and dust control measures would be implemented. Any BMPs would be in compliance with the county stormwater manual. Uh, they'd be required a surety bond, um, if the permit was approved. Uh, they'd have to submit a cost estimate, uh, to include erosion control measures, stabilization, reclamation, and then that would have to be approved by the board of commissioners. Uh, the nearest residence is approximately four hundred feet, um, from, uh, the mining location. There are wetlands on the property. Um, as you can see, there is a, there's two streams, oh, three streams if you include that one, and then a stock dam. Uh, there is special flood hazard area on the property. Uh, according to the application and the applicant, they'll put in an eighteen-inch culvert, uh, in here, uh, to accommodate the drainage. They'd have to show through an engineered plan that an eighteen-inch culvert would, would be, um, sufficient for that. Uh, and then their plans show that they are staying outside of, uh, the special flood hazard area. Although they did state that if any sediment got into that pond, the pond would act as like a sediment pond and filter out. Um, but that wouldn't be allowed. We wouldn't allow any, any sediment to go into that pond as that is a special flood hazard area. Uh, so this is just their, their BMP plan. Uh, so as you can see, this would be where the stockpile area would be and then the mining operation, which is on a different slide, would be throughout here. They do have a proposed, well, this says sixty feet, sixty-foot buffer, um, between the operation. And then these are the erosion, um, soil check dams. Uh, they have not submitted, um, hours of operation. I believe he said at the planning commission meeting that it was seven to four. Um, so they wouldn't need any lighting. Uh, dust control measures, they'd use dust suppression on the rock crusher, uh, water on site, vegetative berms and soil roughening. Uh, berms would be installed to reduce the noise. Again, no lighting would be required. Uh, they've indicated that no blasting would occur on site, which would limit, uh, vibration. Um, they indicate that they don't need a storm wa- uh, spill prevention plan as their bulk storage is less than one thousand three hundred twenty gallons. That equipment would be refueled using mobile refuelers, not parked on site. Uh, this would still require secondary, uh, containment. Uh, no chemicals would be stored on the site. Uh, they would not be allowed to do, uh, any store any junk material or, or dispose of any on the site. And they'd have to put screening berms, which they're already proposing along two twenty-fifth, uh, to the north and one fifty-first to the east. So these are the phases. So this would be where the crusher site's at and their stockpiles, and then they have phases. And then they have some proposed future, future mine sites to the south. Uh, if this permit was approved, it would only be for what's you see in red here. Anything after that, they'd have to come in and amend their permit. Uh, so access is, uh, there's two access points, two twenty-fifth street, uh, which is on your left here. This is what it would look like. It's sixty-six foot wide public right-of-way. It's a section line. Uh, but the paved surface, uh, like white line to white line, when I measured it, was approximately nineteen feet. Uh, there's no shoulder or turn lane. Uh, the average daily traffic count for outside of Box Elder city limits, uh, in the county is two hundred and twenty-five, two fifty, two hundred and fifty-five. It's two hundred and fifty, sorry, two hundred and fifty-five, um, cars per day. Inside the city of Box Elder limits, it would be according to their twenty twenty-four strategic, strategic transportation plan. You're looking at anywhere from three thousand vehicles a day or, or above. Uh, one fifty-first, which would be this picture, is again a sixty-six foot wide public right-of-way. It's only a twenty-one foot wide paved surface, no shoulder or turn lane, and that twenty-one feet is from pavement to white line on the other side, um, the side where we measured didn't have the white line. Uh, average daily traffic count is four hundred and seventy-five vehicles per day. Uh, so ordinance fourteen standards for agriculture zoning district require twenty-four foot wide gravel road. So while these roads are paved, uh, they don't meet the standards for width. Uh, commercial, um, industrial zones require thirty-two foot wide paved road, uh, ten-foot driving lanes with a ten-foot turn lane and one-foot shoulders. Uh, the reason why I say that is because highway put in a comment that if this permit's approved, uh, one fifty-first would need to be approved to those commercial standards. Uh, so future land use for Pennington County currently is, uh, corner is commercial. And then there's a portion of rural residential and agriculture. Uh, the mining operation is within this agriculture. So this is what's currently in the, in the future land use. However, at the last board of commissioners meeting, um, I believe it was approved to, uh, change the future land use plan or it was continued, but the current, um, what's being proposed is to match the city of Box Elder's, uh, future land use plan, so it's all changing to rural residential, so that agriculture wouldn't meet that, that future land use at the time. Uh, so currently the city of Box Elder has, uh, the portion of property and where the mine location at, um, you'll see is this yellow color, which is residential, approximately one to eight dwelling units per acre, and there's a little commercial on the side. Uh, they're currently also working through changing their future land use plan, uh, which changes the entire property to, uh, mixed use, which we're talking with the city of Box Elder, um, and I believe I, I don't have the chart.
His phone's ringing. Thank you.
I don't have the, the chart on me, but, uh, mixed use, um, allows for, um, some small commercial, uh, and then a secondary, uh, higher density residential. Uh, that would be on page seventeen of the staff report. Uh, current uses in the area, you have agriculture, commercial and residential. Um, so the agriculture uses that I could, um, could find include a vet daycare, uh, truck stop and eating establishments. Uh, there's a Starbucks, McDonald's, I believe there's a Hardee's attached to that truck stop. Um, of, and then that daycare, um, some storage units. And then, um, when you're looking at the map, there are some daycares that are listed over in this area as well. Um, I don't know if those are approved daycare, so I didn't include that in there. Uh, so for the major street plan for the city of Box Elder, that's kind of hard to see, um, but this is the subject property. Um, they have, um, several proposed arterials running through the property, uh, for future development. And then they have a shared use, uh, path. The easiest way to describe a shared use path is thinking of the city of Rapid City's bike path, where you have bikers, joggers, walkers, people in wheelchairs, um, scooters, all that sort of thing using it. And then they do have a proposed, uh, sewer line, um, that they're working with to go through the property, um, down to, uh, highway fourteen sixteen. Uh, currently on the property, it's vacant. There's no onsite wastewater treatment system. This was routed off of your department review. Uh, if approved, the highway department's comments would say that one hundred and fifty-first avenue would be in, need to be improved ordinance fourteen commercial standards. And that the approved approach for two twenty-fifth street must be removed, um, as an additional access. Uh, it was not known that it was going to be a mining operation when that approach was approved. And then the county flood plain manager said that the proposed operation is close to the special flood hazard area in the floodway. Um, however, their, their plans show that they're going to be outside of that. The application states the pond will be used to filter any sediment that leaves the site. This would be prohibited. And there's concerns with groundwater contamination as the applicant is proposing to excavate forty feet and while data shows, um, well, the static water levels of seventeen to fifty feet. Uh, so again, the applicants are proposing to mine a hundred and sixty acres approximately for sand and gravel to a depth of forty feet. The operation is expected to last till twenty forty-five. Uh, access roads are not adequate for the proposed site. Uh, the property is within the three-mile plating jurisdiction of the city of Box Elder. The city of Box Elder's future land use identifies the property and surrounding areas residential and mixed use. Uh, so a mining operation does not fit. And Pennington County future land use identifies the surrounding property as a mix of commercial, rural, residential and agriculture. Um, the future land use amendment for the county identifies the whole property as residential. They established land uses in the area of commercial, residential and agriculture, uh, so an aggregate mining operation does not fit, uh, within the area for existing land uses as well. And so therefore the proposed mining operation is not in harmony with the existing future land uses in the area. Sorry, I'm going to go way back. Uh, so staff is recommending denial mining permit COMP twenty-five dash zero 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 one. As is, as it is not in harmony with existing and future land uses, uh, lacks adequate access and infrastructure and impacts to water quality are undetermined.
Thank you, Cody. Can you tell me why the planning commission recommended denial without prejudice?
Um, I'm not sure why they did without prejudice. Usually when you do without prejudice, it's they're missing some things. Um, so for instance, I listed those three things on my staff's recommending denial for. Um, the water quality could be determined by a, um, like environmental impact and, um, statement or an analysis. So they'd have a year to come back if they did that. Um, they could improve one fifty-first and, and the road to do that. Um, to come back within a year with the same application. The only thing that staff sees is that it doesn't fit the area, the future land use or existing area, um, existing uses, and I don't know how that would be fixed within a year. Um, but they just put it without prejudice.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. So I think, uh, staff, or staff, um, commission, if we want to hear from the speaker's request first and then speak, is everybody okay with that?
I'm good with that.
Yes.
So, um, we do have a three-minute time limit. Um, are you going to time that, Kenner, or is Joan going to say time? So it's three minutes each person, please, and then give them a heads up when they're like, I don't know. Thirty seconds or something. Ms. Joan? Okay, so green is three minutes on, when you're speaking. Red, what is, yellow is almost time done, and then, um, red is you're done speaking. Everybody have that? Green is go, red is stop, yield in between means you're almost done. How about that? Okay, so we're going to start with the speaker requests and the first name. If I mess your name up, I apologize. Tim Kosters. Thank you, Tim. If you'd state your name. And then anything you have to say, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. And my name is Tim Kosters. I'm the executive director of operations for the Douglas School District. Um, and I'm, and our board has passed a resolution to oppose the mining operation or the potential mining operation, uh, with our school district. Mostly because when you look at the strategic plan for one of the largest growing schools or largest growing cities of Box Elder in the state of South Dakota, it's top, one of the top three. Um, it does not fit into the strategic or strategic direction for the community at all. Um, it does not meet that expectation of, um, a continued improvement in our, in our, in our city. Um, the second reason is, is really we serve a lot of military families, obviously. So when our military families are moving in and out of our, our, our city, what is happening is they're obviously buying and selling homes with a depreciation value expected when the mine goes in next door. Sorry. So that should be off, and that is avoidable. Um, but the increase or decrease in property values is going to significantly impact our military families that we serve. Um, when they're going to be trying to buy and sell houses, it's going to expand the mobility rate. They're going to take longer to sell and buy houses alone. Applications are going to probably, are going to be more difficult. Um, and really the safety of our students is our biggest concern when we increase truck traffic on, uh, two twenty-fifth, especially, uh, with our young students that are continually coming to and from school, walking to and from school, they're having to cross those highways, things like that, that is a major concern of our school district. Uh, so for those, for those reasons, we definitely oppose, uh, the, the proposed mining operation in the Box Elder.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Kosters? Yes, sir.
So you have a new elementary school that's planned for just south of this property, is that what I understand?
Correct, it is. Yeah, it is south of the property.
Can you identify where that is? Is that on the other side of fourteen sixteen?
It is on the other side of fourteen sixteen, yes.
So on the south side of fourteen sixteen?
Correct. Um, the map that was up there, it went over to the school district to Francis Case.
Excuse me, Tim, just for a second, sir. Can you put that map up there so everybody can see that map? Thank you. Cody, do you know where the?
Uh, you had a circle drawn around the property.
Gotcha.
And it basically intersected with Francis Case Elementary, the middle school. You look on the left-hand side there, that, those are going over onto the Francis Case and, uh, high school corners, basically, the middle school, the, the tower road and two twenty-fifth is our, my biggest concern. Obviously, I'm an operations guy, so we're handling traffic around the, around the school district and that's a big concern as well.
Commissioner Drews, do you have any follow-up?
No, I don't.
Okay, any other commissioner have a question?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Commissioner?
So, you've seen the, their proposed, uh, applicant or application and, you know, they've got, seems, there, there's pages of detail on how they would go forward. Have you met with the applicants to, is there anything that they could do to, uh, ease your mind, I guess I might say?
I think, um, some of the comments that were made earlier about the traffic conditions and not having adequate roadways is a, are a major concern. Um, my, obviously our concern is the traffic around the school and the noise pollution, dust pollution, environmental impact as well. Um, but ti- but definitely the traffic with students walking to and from school is a, is our safety concern, is my biggest concern.
So if they could address the traffic and, uh, safety concerns with that, uh,
it's still within the, uh, within a mile basically of where our school district is on that, on that west corner. Uh, it's a concern for the district and definitely we would oppose this moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Tim.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking today. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have David Hut Hatch. David Hatch? Thank you, David. If you'd just state your name, sir.
My name is Dave Hatch, um, landowner just, uh, to the east of the site, um, separated by one fifty-first. Um, because of the northwest wind, I'm probably the most impacted by this with the dust and the noise. Um, however, uh, my family has had that for forty-five years, um, agricultural. Um, we have always, uh, tried to do things that's, um, in harmony with the community. That means get along with your neighbors. And, uh, in this case, I'm not, I'm not opposed to gravel pits and I'm not opposed to trucking. I'm opposed to where this location is, um, where they propose to do it. Um, to me, it is a way to make a lot of money at the expense of everybody around it. Um, it'll highly impact the community with, uh, the roads and, uh, the dust and the noise and then, um, so I am encouraging commission to deny the request.
Thank you. Do, commission, does any of the commissioners like to ask Mr. Hatch any questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
So, Mr. Hatch? What would you think would be the best purpose of that property?
Uh, what's consistent with the community, which would be either agriculture or development, meaning small business, housing, not mining.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Wyfembach, did you have any questions for anybody? Mr. Hatch, I should say.
No, I have no questions. I do want to disclose that I had, uh, talked to Mr. DeMersermon about his project and I also talked to, um, the mayor of, uh, Box Elder about the project, so I just wanted to disclose that. And, uh, Mr. DeMersermon thought that, uh, our planning, uh, com- commission was wrong on some of the items and, uh, uh, the mayor of Box Elder and their council is clearly opposed to the project, so I wanted to disclose that was the conversations I had.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I think Mr. DeMersermon called all of- I think Mr. DeMersermon called all of us, and me and Mr. Wyffenbach were in a meeting with the Box Elder mayor and other stuff, and that's, I also was in the room when that was discussed, so, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Dur.
Yeah, just to comment, the applicant did not call me, so we have not talked.
Okay.
But I will, just in this point, I have talked to the community out there, I've talked to the mayor, and most of the residents in the room, I've had conversations with, and so that's my disclosure.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, 'cause for me, I need to visit with both sides to kinda see what's going on, and don't pick a side until I come up here and look for my information and look at my facts. So I think talking to both sides is a good thing, talking to one side, I believe, is, I don't think is beneficial, 'cause if you don't talk to both sides, you really don't know maybe some of all the facts. So I appreciate commissioners saying that they had talked to sides or who they hadn't talked to, so.
And I have talked to them also. I've talked to both the other side too, so I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Hatch.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next, we'll have Mayor Larry Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and commissioners, appreciate the, the time. I'm not gonna go through all of the, the things that other people are gonna be talking about. I just wanna point out that the council did approve a resolution opposing this, and you should have that. The Box Elder Chamber of Commerce also should have sent you, well, I know that was sent here, and you should have that, and of course, the school. One thing that probably wasn't mentioned is that I took a look at the, the evaluation of the property, just that would be affected, that got letters, and if you look around the country, the valuations go down about twenty percent approximately, and so I took that value and had our finance person just do some figures, and if that would hold true, we would lose a little over ninety-two thousand dollars a year. And so that's, that's significant. I, you know, I know that the commission, our, not the commission, the council, and the school, and, and all the people out there, they're concerned, and we hope that you, you know, vote against this. It doesn't fit into our, our goals and our long-range plans. We want, we, we can grow, but we grow to the, we'll have to grow to the east, and to the east, we want housing and businesses. We don't wanna gravel pit, nothing against gravel pits, I just, that's just not a good spot. Somebody mentioned that it's within four hundred feet of, of one particular residence, and a lot of the houses over there in West Winds are very, very close. Noise, sound, all kinds of things are gonna be a problem, and their property value will be going down. They will have trouble selling their property if they wanna sell it, so. Anyway, make sure, I appreciate if you'd read our, our resolution, has all of our reasons, so.
Thank you, Mayor Larson. Do we have any discussion for Mayor Larson?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
So Mayor Larson, when you say, the West Winds, is that what you call that development? Housing development?
Yes.
So how close would that be to this quarter of land?
Oh, it's, I, I, I'm not sure. It's like, maybe not even a quarter of a mile, probably.
I guess I'm not familiar with where, where.
Four hundred feet?
It's right there, you can see it right there. Right there, that's, it's adjacent to it, right?
Mayor Larson, we'll let Cody answer that, sir.
So senior planner, or Cody Sacks, senior planner, for reference, this black line around the property is approximately half a mile. So I don't know where the specific property's at, but that black mine, or that black circle is a half a mile from the property lines.
Right, right there. All of that area there is, is West Winds.
Okay.
So I mean, it puts right up against it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mayor Larson? Matt?
Thank you, sir, for coming today.
Next is Myron Mann, if you'd like to come up and speak, sir.
Myron Mann, I just live north of that, within the half-mile circle. The roads don't support it. We haven't said where the water's gonna come to do this. Our wells are all contaminated out there. You're not gonna pump water out, them and back in and use it, the wetlands that go down through there. I just urge you to support what Cody and the planning commission has done. You have them there to do a job, they did their job, now support what they come up with. Thank you.
Thank you, Myron. There might be questions for you, any questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
So, Myron, when you say, did I understand you to say the water is contaminated?
The wells have been contaminated out there for years, and they put in this.
Okay, so you're not talking about additional contamination, you're talking about the water?
Right, if they wanted to use the water out of that well to pump it out, I don't think they should be allowed to use it for their dust containment.
Okay, thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Thank you. Next, we have Josephine Chase.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Dr. Josephine Chase, and I'm the president of a faith-based organization just directly to the east of the proposed site, next between Mr. Hatch and Mr. Knodel, and it's called Chankuluta Omani. At, our location is two twenty-five seventy-six one fifty-first avenue. We've been established on this property since two thousand and one, and I'm opposing the gravel pit for all the reasons that the other people stated. We hold activities and events on our property, and I know that the roads are not appropriate for this weight and amount of traffic that the gravel pit will bring, and also that the high dust will be, I mean, it's already windy out there, we all know, that's why the base is located out there, so it comes directly at us, and so that would be a major concern. Also, I would be concerned about, you know, any water pollution, we do have some horses on our property, concern for the local residents. I know the school bus travels along one fifty-first at least twice a day, and I would be concerned about the weight on the one bridge that's located there under the interstate underpass. I'm concerned for the environment, the wildlife, we have a lot of cranes, ducks, geese, deer, antelope that traverse across there, and they're on our property as well as go across the road to this property. And as everybody else has said, it's located or identified as agriculture and, you know, kind of development housing, so the gravel pit really doesn't fit into that category. So I just, I know at the last hearing that the property owner stated that, well, expansion's gonna happen anyway, and that the roads will have to take it, but that's planned development, and I'm sure the city of Box Elder and the county would prepare for that ahead of time to manage that kind of traffic and weight. So just noting my opposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Dr. Josephine? Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Wyffenbach, please.
Typically, and I don't have a question for her, I have to agree with her on the planning part, that planning is part of it, but my question, is there anybody that's for this? Because typically, we go, in Robert's rules of order, would ask that you oppose, you'd have one that was opposed, and one that was for, 'cause everybody's been against it or opposed it so far.
The only ones that are for it are the applicants, that's why we did the oppose, 'cause they're the only ones for speaker requests, sir.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, you're okay. Next, we'll have Mark Nodel. Hopefully, I said that right. K-N-O-D-E-L, I think that's how you spell your last name.
No, it's Knodel.
Knodel, thank you, Mr. Knodel.
It's a Knodel.
My fan group back here, they're not very good.
They're not helping you.
Anyway, Mark Knodel is my name. I live directly across one fifty-first from the, the mining site that's being asked for. Same concerns, the roads, the safety, the water, it doesn't fit. There's nothing that's been brought to any of the meetings I've been to that says that it fits. Property value, dust control, those things are huge out there, and I just don't understand why we keep going down this road. You've got the city against it, you've got the school board against it, you've got the residents against it. We've got petitions out there, those are four hundred and some signed petitions, that I don't know if it's made it to you people, if it hasn't, we'll get it to you. That's how many people are against this. So I guess my question to whoever might be for it, other than the applicants and the landowner, I'm kinda like, where will we, where do we go from here? I'm open for questions or comments. Again, I can't say anything more than whatever others have already said.
Our bottom line is, we hear both sides, to be fair and just, and then we make that decision. So we can't help with people for or against, we just kinda listen to the information, take those facts into consideration, and then decide, and usually, the commissioners tell why they're for or against.
Perfect, thank you.
When they have a decision, sir.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you. Any questions for Mark? No. Okay, I'm not gonna say your name again. Thank you, sir, for speaking. Don't mess it up. Next, we'll have Dean Hedrick. Hedrick, yep, I think I got that name right, Dean.
Thank you, commissioners. No need to repeat what everyone else has said, but my name is Dean Hedrick, I am a resident of Box Elder, I'm a builder developer in Box Elder, I am the builder advisor on the planning commission for Box Elder, I am the vice chairman of Single Family Builders for the nation, and I also serve on the state and local government affairs. I simply give you that information to let you know that I do have knowledge, experience, and authority, but I am solely representing myself as an individual and as a builder. And wanna point out a couple things that I don't think anyone has really addressed or talked about, and that's the economic impact of this. Mayor Larson alluded to the fact, within that half-mile radius where you see the circle up there, to the best calculations, right now, there are about two hundred and thirty-five homes. Most of them are workforce housing in support of Ellsworth Air Force Base with an average cost of three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollars. The statistics that I am being given by the National Association of Home Builders with very similar instances, with very similar proposals, is that there will be an eighteen to twenty percent reduction in assessed value of homes within a one-mile radius of something proposed this close to a town. Now, my, my best calculation says that will take almost twenty million dollars in property tax revenue availability away from Pennington County and the city of Box Elder. Nobody seems to be mentioning that. The other thing that I wanna talk about it is, as a developer and a builder, you'll see the place up there that says Civil Way, Liberty Park Drive, that's the Liberty Park subdivision. We are the builder developer there, I've got six lots left, and guess what? They're the cul-de-sac lots that abut and face the gravel pit. Again, I haven't begun building homes there, we're waiting for a decision here. The most recent housing study in the city of Box Elder, the Department of Defense helped with, said that single-family homes is going well for the B-21 base expansion, that we've got multifamily homes, your big apartment complexes, everything's on track there, but they quote, "A sore and urgent need for townhomes." That's cottage homes, duplexes, triplexes, and quads, called out in the housing study in support of the B-21 base expansion. Now, wasn't that many years ago that the Ellsworth Air Force Base was on the base closure list? We have adapted, we have modified, we are doing that. I'm going to show you up here, there is a little blurb of city right there where the arrow is, that's a nine-acre parcel of land. There's currently a group that I am a part of, and we are currently in design and engineering to satisfy that cottage home duplex, quad, triplex need for, that's requested by the city of Box Elder Housing Study and the Department of Defense. But as, we're looking at that being a twelve to fifteen million dollar project, but if we go into it knowing that we're looking at a twenty percent devaluation in property because of an adjacent mine that's less than a quarter mile from where we're going to be building, we're not going to do that, okay? That affects the city, that affects property tax values, that affects the valuation of the homes, and I simply don't see when you're non-conforming, when you're non-compliant, when the planning commission is recommending no, why they're, where the discussion lies. I understand, thank you for your time, that you're gonna have both positive and negative thoughts, and you need to hear everything to make an adequate decision. But I would strongly encourage you, before you make that decision, to ask who benefits economically if the gravel pit goes in, and who is, benefits negatively, meaning the city of Box Elder, Pennington County, residents, the Ellsworth Air Force Base, if this goes in. Where is your, where's, where's the money go? And how's the money affected? Because bottom line is, you know, it's the economic impact that it has on the city and the county, and I, and you discussed it earlier, fifty percent of your revenue for the Pennington County Commission comes from property taxes.
You're at the time limit?
Thank you, Dean, just, are you wrapped up pretty much? Okay. Wrapped up. Thanks, Kenner. Any questions for Mr. Hedrick?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Russell.
So if I understand it, with the, if this went forward, there'd be a reduction in about twenty million dollars in property assessments.
According to most accurate statistics, yes, there would be an eighteen to twenty percent reduction in the assessed value of homes within a one-mile radius of the proposed site.
And then I think I heard Mayor Larson say something to the effect that would be a reduction of about ninety-four thousand dollars in real estate taxes.
Annually.
Annually, so.
Not including expansion and continued development of housing because of this.
I just wondered what that mill levy was used to do these projections and how the mill levy was supported.
How the mill levy is supported with it, that information I do not have.
Okay. That's just the relationship between your assessed value and budget.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Drews.
So, Mr. Hedrick, as a builder developer yourself, what would, what would you propose that this section of land be best used for as you look at growth for Box Elder? Because obviously, it's not gonna be left vacant, I don't think.
Most agreed, most agreed, and about the only way Box Elder can move is east, and we currently have from Highway fourteen sixteen south, we have the proposed mine, or not the mine, the proposed water and sewer lines going up all the way to two hundred and twenty-fourth Street in, in, in growth potential. I know in the future land use development, all of that area there, that entire section was proposed as future land use for mixed use, which is residential, high-density residential, and multifamily.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other question for Mr. Hedrick?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Russell.
So, you know, I keep thinking, going back to the prison in eastern South Dakota, so the rub there was just the, they had the rezone, and so I'm just trying to put this in perspective, so if we rezone, how much authority, if we did rezone, that would allow the mining operation, how much authority do we have on the land use? Where, where, where does that come in to play?
Can Cody or?
So, Cody Sacks, senior planner, you're talking about rezoning it to a zoning designation that would allow mining, is that what?
Well, what, the property's currently zoned ag. So is a mining operation permitted in ag, like the Pearly Pit?
With approved mining permit, which is like a conditional use permit, which would be the same if you rezoned it to industrial as well.
But what's the difference between this proposed operation? But what's the difference between this proposed operation and the pearly pit?
The pearly pit was an existing mining operation for a long time, and then the future land use was also ag, so it wasn't, it fit with the area. Also, the pearly pit was under 507B, which Commissioners might not remember, is a little tiny paragraph, which is what we could base our criteria for review off of. And that basically said, if you take out a hundred cubic yards or more, that you needed a mine, mining permit, and you needed to tell us like what roads you were using. There wasn't any of this seven criteria for a conditional use permit, or the five criteria for the mining permit. So you didn't have to look at future land use and existing uses in the area. Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
So Cody, I have a question while you're up here. How far is our new mining permit, how far is residential allowed? And when we had some residential with Pete Lean's pit, how far?
Yep, so, the current ordinance says you have to identify houses within three-hundred feet of the proposed boundary of the mining operation. Pete Lean is a grandfathered legal non-conforming pit. They just registered what their boundary was, because they've been around for a hundred years. The only other permits that we have under this current zoning ordinance are off of Trask Road, way out east, and then south of Wasta.
So you, we put the, if someone has, well, existing is grandfathered, I get that part, but how far, if this was industrial, we made it industrial, and they had a pit there, how far from the housing or from the road, or what is, tell me some of the setbacks on some of those areas?
So even if it was industrial, you'd still have to follow our current zoning ordinance for mining operations, which you'd have that three-hundred feet. I want to say, I don't think there's a specific setback to a structure. It just says you have to identify those structures within three-hundred feet. But currently, the setback, without looking at it off the top of my head, it's, since it's, this property per se, if you approved the license, there's a setback actually to the right-of-way, I believe, I want to say it's fifty feet from the center line of the right-of-way, or a hundred feet, whatever's greater. I don't have that number off the top of my head, I apologize.
So they have a road in between the mine, do they have a road on that west side of the mining square there, which is the east side of the existing residence? Is there a road in between there or anything?
No, so the only two roads are two-twenty-fifth and one-fifty-first. So these are the two roads, there's no road in between anything to the west or the south.
Okay, and how many existing, or not existing, but other mines have we approved that were this close to residential? Or gravel pits or otherwise? Because most of them are existing, if I'm correct.
Off the top of my head, the only ones that I can think of, under the current ordinance of three-twenty, I can't think of any, like I said, there's only two that I can remember off the top of my head, and those are, Pete Lean's got one south of Wasta in a rural agriculture area, and then Trask Road is agriculture north of the wall, so nothing in, nothing where you have a huge residential subdivision.
Unless they're grandfathered.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Hedrick?
Thank you for your time, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next would be Randy Oliver.
Randy Olivier, I think Oliver comes from a French thing, olive growers, so you're close, I'll go with that. Randy Olivier, I live just north of this proposed mine. My kids are Douglas School District kids. We've heard nothing but opposition from the different parties, you know, the school board unanimous, the city unanimous, and the Chamber of Commerce unanimous. I don't know that I can't do anything but add to that. I know Jerry Durs opposed to it, and this is his district, and we've had a conversation with him. The staff recommendation spells it out pretty well. My concern is the health, safety, and well-being of my children and twenty-four-hundred other children that attend Douglas Schools. I'm not opposed to mines, I think they have a good plan in place. It's just the spot is the wrong spot because of the density of twenty-four-hundred kids potentially traveling this road and others. They'll speak to, I'm sure, the noise and the impact. It doesn't fit the nature of this area. I had the opportunity, as a commercial real estate agent, to bring WAPA Power, which is a national power agency, to the north side of the interstate on the west side of Liberty Boulevard. Right there, and they were willing to pay market rate. The city denied us because it's an industrial use and does not fit their future use. This would also be an industrial use, even though it's conditionally proved through an ag zoning, but it doesn't, it just doesn't match up, and that's what the city's trying to protect. So as a broker, I also get other brokers that call me, knowing I'm familiar with the Box Elder area in Rapid City, "Hey, what have you got in Rapid City except Box Elder?" So they're okay with Somerset, and so we're trying to change that, and Box Elder's done a damn good job of cleaning it up. Old trailer parks have been the nemesis for a long time, substandard par. They're cleaning it up, the mayor's been the mayor for ten years, and I think his voice should sound as well, as well as the city council unanimously denying this. So I would ask that you deny this with prejudice, so we don't have to come back and do this, because the location will never change. And again, I think they have a good plan, and now I'm done. But it just is in the wrong spot, Madam Chair.
Randy, you heard Mr. Olivier, I'll just call you Randy, so I won't mess it up.
Randy's good.
So deny without prejudice means if they had a different.
With prejudice.
With prejudice, they could bring it back later.
They could not bring it back.
They can bring it back, do you want to specify what that means? So you want to deny or deny without prejudice, or bring it back with different stipulations?
So, Cody Sack, our senior planner, so to deny with prejudice, or just a flat-out denial, they'd have to wait a year before they could reapply for this again. If you deny it with prejudice, it's, or without, sorry. Then they can come back with the same application, basically what the Board of Commissioners would do, would be putting criteria on that they need to meet. And once they met that criteria, they could reapply through our office under the same application. They wouldn't have to pay a new application fee, they would just have to pay the fees for advertising.
Be deny or oppose, or deny without prejudice?
I would like it not to be able to come back to this commission. So help me with that and understanding, that's, I'm a layman with this, so I'm denying. Because the location will never change in spite of improvements that may be made, and mitigation and safety things that may happen, the location never changes, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hi, Ron, I'm sorry you're not here, are you, are you here?
Hold on just a second.
Ron Wyfembach.
So Commissioners, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Randy?
Sorry.
Oh.
Commissioner Drews.
Madam Chair, so you talk about gravel being hauled through Box Elder and impacting twenty-four-hundred students. But if we deny this, that doesn't mean there won't be gravel hauled through if the need is there, does it?
Well, I think it's the mine that we're denying, it's the location of the mine and where it's produced.
How does that relate, though, to the twenty-four-hundred students then? If there's still gonna be gravel hauled through Box Elder?
Probably the scope of work. It's daily, forty, fifty trucks a day versus much less, per se, residential. Dean, how many, can I cross, I don't know how many trucks travel a day for a development. I wouldn't have that analysis, but it's certainly not forty-one-way a day.
Okay, I presume we'll hear that from the opponents.
Sure, sure, and I can't pretend to speak to them, but.
Any other Commissioners? Mr. Wyfembach, do you have any discussion for Mr. Randy?
Oh, Madam Chair, I know, I spoke to Randy earlier about this project, but I would, I would, I would want to say, because we're talking about all kinds of different projections and points here, but one thing, as a commission, that is probably of the utmost importance is, you know, considering the future land use there, how the land is being used now, how the future land use will be, because that's what determines what happens in that area. So I would, I'd like to see someone bring forward, you know, what is the future land use for the county? And what is the future land use for those stakeholders in Box Elder that are near to this project? Because I think that that hasn't been talked about, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Randy, do you have any other questions?
I'd like to make one note, I do have a commercial subdivision owner that brought Starbucks into Box Elder. And I also have met the McDonald's new franchisee who bought from the Walla family, from Colorado they came. My concern is, we have a taco franchise looking at that spot too. And Doug Lightsky, the developer's worried that if we have a mine, it could influence, because they look at a thirty-thousand-foot view when they're coming in as a national franchise. And that could very well affect the land value that he's got and the quality of tenants that will come in. And that's what we're trying to do, is improve the quality of life in Box Elder.
Thank you, Randy.
Thanks, Madam Chair, thanks Commissioners.
One more.
Hold on, Randy, one more.
So, when I look at this, I see similar issues that have happened in the county, and obviously there's some kind of an economic driver behind the proposed use of a gravel quarry. But my other question is, at one time, it was my understanding that this property was for sale.
It's currently for sale.
Nine million or something like that.
What's that? I think it's twelve million eight hundred for all six-hundred-and-forty acres.
So I was just thinking out loud, so if a consortium of developers went ahead and bought that property, if they felt that it was worth that much, and then they would have, they'd have control of the land use and this whole thing would go away, would that be a safe assumption?
Could you repeat that, sorry, the last part?
I'm just saying, if a consortium of developers, and you know, you've got some major developers out there in Box Elder, thought the twelve million eight hundred was a fair price, and they went together and bought that under an LLC or whatever, then this whole problem would go away, because chances are that the gravel pit wouldn't be on the table. I'm just trying to, you know, look outside the box.
I would agree with that, and I think all of the developers, not a one of them that I've talked to for this area, builders, developers, have needed a gravel pit to support the financing of a land development. So I think that's kind of a moot point, I think it's a financial gain, and I don't deny that they shouldn't try to do that, it's just the wrong spot, it's the wrong location, sir.
No, I understand. I'm just saying, if it's under different ownership, that wouldn't even be a consideration, probably.
Right.
Right. And, you know, I think this part right here, since you speak to the land, this little corner here, Mr. Demersman does have an opportunity to sell that as commercial property, especially as the road goes through in the future. But this is, this is a different use than that, and the concern with the developer on the other side of the road is that when people come in as national franchises, they look at Box Elder as a thirty-thousand-foot view. If they've got an active mine in the northeast corner, they just say, skip, they don't even call me. So that's my concern, is bringing industry into Box Elder versus maybe prohibiting it both residentially and commercially. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I appreciate the comments. The bottom line here is, for future land use, I don't really agree always with future land use. I'll be up straight, it's politically or developer-driven. But I do believe health and safety play a big part in what you put in for development. I don't care if it's a gravel pit or otherwise. So for me, we can worry about taxes and stuff, and we can worry about how much money one or the other does. But the bottom line is, it's the health and safety, and then the future land use, what is that gonna look like? So there's a lot of driven parts and pieces to this, but we do have, I know Wyfembach and Mr. Roskinek read that statement almost every other meeting about health, safety, and welfare. So I appreciate that, and I'll say, bottom line, for me, that's gonna come first before all these other decisions, because we have an obligation to the developer, we have an obligation also to the citizens for that health, welfare, and safety. And if we were always politically driven towards how much taxes we can make off of it, we'd be in, we'd have a problem. It has to always come first about our mission statement, so, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Now, the applicants are next, thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
The applicants are next to speak. Is there anybody we missed in the audience that did not speak and didn't fill out a speaker request before we move on to the applicants, so they can defend or oppose what we're saying on the mining on this point?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I just want to clarify, I did serve on the Planning Commission when this came up, before the Planning Commission. I have talked to several people since then that have made contact with me. I've not made contact with them, but they made contact with me, that indicated their support for it. I've also talked to Mr. Demersman further on it. As I had revealed at that point in time, I've been in contact with him for several years relative to this property, so just wanted to know that.
Thank you, Commissioner Drews. So next we'll have the applicants, if you'd just state your names. I don't know how many are speaking, are three of you speaking, sir?
Yeah, I believe so. Clyde Lipp with Sixty-three Industries, good morning Commissioners and Madam Chair.
And your name's Clyde?
Clyde Lipp.
Clyde Lipp.
With Sixty-three Industries.
Thank you, sir.
I wanted to bring a quick, little handout with the, kind of where our proposed pit is in relation to what we're currently, where we're currently serving Ellsworth Air Force Base to show up. Distance relative.
And this was shown at the Planning Commission, sir, too, or did this come about?
This has come about, yeah, this is, I just put together this quick little exhibit just to kind of show, you know, the gravel's going to come in regardless, it has to, to promote the building out in that area.
Okay.
And this at least shows that, in an attempt, you know, with this proposed area, or proposed mine site, that we're going to reduce that by half.
Okay, so you already had a pit there before?
We have a pit at the ten-mile, the ten-mile and seventy, or ten-point-seven-six mile point there. That's the current pit that we have that is servicing Box Elder and Ellsworth Air Force Base with material.
Okay.
And then this is just kind of to show you the difference in mileage that it would be from a haul aspect, which should have a reflection on truck traffic, amount of wear and tear on roads, because it's half the distance.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Lipp.
And then the other thing I want to state, that we did receive our state mining license, it was approved.
Thank you.
So if you know that, I had not got back to Cody with some of my comments, some of the comments that I needed to get back to him, where in regards to comments from some of the other agencies as part of that NLI process, I had to submit the NLI statement to the different agencies, and I just started to get those back. So that's why I haven't got back with you, I wanted to get you a complete package instead of a pieced and parted-together package there.
Thank you, Mr. Lipp. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Lipp?
And that's kind of what I wanted to do today, is just try to answer any questions that are kind of outlining with the commission here, so that, you know, that we can better understand what's going on here. Please realize that our operation plan, our reclamation plan, and our stormwater plan that was submitted as our permit process is a living, breathing document. It's open for interpretation and, you know, changes to adapt and make it work.
So you're, Mr. Lipp, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Do you own the pit right now?
Yes.
And you own the land, too?
No, we run a very similar situation that we're trying to work with Mr. Demersman, it's a royalty pit, yes.
Okay, so you're just expanding the pit?
Yes.
If Mr. Demersman would sell you the land?
We're looking at doing a royalty, a royalty lease agreement with Mr. Demersman, just like we do at our current pit. And this is an effort to, you know, to kind of. Um, and this is an effort to, you know, to kind of help out our customers. Right now, if we can reduce haul, that reduces the, the haul per ton by probably half.
Okay.
Which is, you know, it, it's economics. It, it drives, it's driven by economics, is what it is.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lipp. Any questions for Mr. Lipp?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross.
So Clyde, you've heard a lot of testimony from the group that's here. So I guess my question, do you got any comments on their comments?
Um, you know, again, with our, uh, in, in the permit, it was stated as, as twenty forty-five, as the, as the end date of this. That is not what it is. That's what the state required me to fill the paperwork out. They wanted a twenty-year timeframe, just because of ease with them. Because they would rather have it extended out and then closed early, instead of having to amend it and amend it. So that's what, that, that direction came from them. The agreement that, uh, we have in place with Mr. Demersman is four years. And that's what we feel that the, that the, um, the reserves there will probably, probably be exhausted at that time. And then, uh, the other, you know, kind of some of the other concerns, you know, with the forty feet, uh, that was a ballpark range. We actually have done some potholing out there. It's that ten to fifteen feet. That's what the material is. That's where the material is kind of waning out and, and, and is not going to be satisfactory to, to meet the specifications that are required.
So part of the testimony that I heard today, and I think we all know that I've been an appraiser in the state of South Dakota for thirty-five years. And I've been asked to appraise losses like that, like the one out there in Somerset, uh, with the mine. And so, I know it's just an estimate of, if the mine was developed, there could be reduction of tw, uh, an assessed value of that area of twenty million dollars with a estimated ninety-five thousand dollar loss to the city Box Elder for property tax. Uh, how do we address that? That's the one, that's the hurdle I'm trying to get through, because I agree, there's property rights on your side, on Demersman's side, and then there's property, you got a lot, two hundred and fifty homes out there, and they have property rights. So I'm just trying to weigh all that, where it makes sense.
I, I think it's just a temporary condition. Um, you know, the, the ultimate goal with this, when we approached, uh, Demersman, was to help start the grading process. Um, I would welcome any of you to come out and visit the property, visit, uh, our current pit before making a decision. And seeing kind of what the operation is and what goes on in this, uh, colloquial, alluvial fan mining process. It's not a rip and tear. It's, I mean, seven, eight feet of material's being removed. Uh, up to ten, if, if it's there. But in our current pit, that's about what we're running on average. And it's a recontouring of the land. I mean, when you look at these, when, you can look at elevation maps on this piece of property and whatnot like that. When you really get out there and, and walk it, there's a lot of elevation difference that needs graded out to make this parcel a developable piece of property in the future. And that's, that's kind of, that was the goal that, uh, Mr. Demersman had with this, with, with coming into this venture with us. It was to, to get the property, property properly graded, so that it could be a develop, more developable, more desirable piece of property for the future.
Sure.
Which, which in turn is going to increase the tax basis on that property. When it goes from ag to the, to the residential, yes, there will be, you know, that's where I say it's going to be a temporary stay in that property values.
And I would certainly entertain doing a personal site visit, just like we did on the solar fields and the wind turbines. Uh, it's hard to make a decision here.
Absolutely.
One hundred percent. It would be nice to go out there and say, at least I took the time and trouble to go on site.
Yes.
Yeah, and, uh, look at the surrounding neighborhood and.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
So, Mr. Lipp, as I look at the map you provided, it appears that the current pit is in Meade County?
Yes, we're just, just into Meade County there, yes.
But the route that you have to take in order to get to Ellsworth still takes you down to either I-90 or to fourteen sixteen.
Yes.
And so you still have to come in from the south to get into Ellsworth Air.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that, that is the commercial entrance that, that they allow truck traffic in, yes. So it's, so it's similar. I mean, we've got some overlap on route there. But for the most part, um, you know, we're, we're reducing, greatly reducing, um, that trucking distance by about half.
Okay. Thank you.
So, just a couple of questions. You live near the pit that you're, you're currently mining?
Uh, I, I used to, but I no longer do, no.
Okay. And then, um, you said temporary, maybe four years doing the pit. You're going to be able to do in four years, six hundred and forty acres?
No, we, we're only permitting, we're only permitting a hundred and sixty acres. And of that hundred and sixty acres, there's probably one hundred of it that's going to be mined. Because the other sixty acres is, is kind of, is, is entirely too close to the, uh, to the floodway. We need to keep our buffer zones there.
Okay. Because what I'm reading on here, mining permit, and then it says located corner twenty, two twenty-fifth street and one fifty-first street. And it says size six hundred and forty acres. So can you not, Cody?
Uh, so Cody Sacks, Senior Planner. So that six hundred and forty acres, uh, on the cover sheet of that permit, that's just for the property? So since this isn't, uh, its own separate property, i- it's on this tax ID on this parcel. So it's, when, when you map it, it's the entire parcel. But what would be permitted would be what you see, oh.
Let me ask you a question, Cody.
In red.
If you have six hundred and forty acres, who owns that land?
It would be, uh, I believe the owner is Mule Ear LLC. And I believe that Sixty-three Industries is leasing from, um, from him to be able to mine that land.
Mr. Demersman owns the others, the total of six hundred and forty acres?
Uh, I believe so. He would own all, from, from our aspect, he would own all six hundred and forty. He's just allowing them to come in and mine on, on their behalf.
And I can appreciate that, but mining moves. So if it becomes profitable, if it becomes, um, economical, um, I've seen from Pete Lean and other companies, um, they're going to follow, follow the gravel. So if somebody owns that property and is making royalties off that property and it's doing well, um, can they not move on to the other properties?
To, to speak on behalf of that, um, so this property had had a, uh, prior to, um, us getting involved on this, had, had a, uh, ground penetrating radar study done on it. And I believe that study was done by the South Dakota DOT, correct, or?
Feds.
The feds, um, on it. And, um, we've identified the areas that are the best or have the best deposit. And that's, that's where the-
One of them is?
Driven, drove the decision of where this location was, wasn't it?
Okay. So just this one location and you-
The, the rest of it just doesn't have the, the depth and quality of gravel on it. This, this quarter does.
But it does have other areas that if you needed to mine, you could mine?
Um, we, we had shown, um, on our, on our kind of proposed site plan or, or spacing plan, that there are the potential of another probably fifteen to twenty acres outside of that hundred and sixty to the, to the, to the, uh, kind of south there, that have that, have the, they appear to have the, uh, the same deposit on them.
Yep.
We have not potholed those areas. But yes, um, like Cody alluded to, if that was the case, uh, it would have to be amended and, and added.
Amended, yep.
Yeah, so, uh, Cody Sacks, Senior Planner. So when we talk about a mine permit, in, in our ordinance, we talk about a mine boundary. So their mine boundary would be limited to what you see in red on the screen, um, up there. So anything outside of that area, they would have to come in and come back to the planning commission and the board, re-notify neighbors, and do everything to, uh, to move south. Um, I don't know what their actual state mining permit is to, what their boundary is, if their state allows it without going back and re-advertising for that. I'd have to talk to Brett Graves at the, at the state. But for our purposes, they'd have to come back in front of you to mine anything more than the hundred and sixty acres that they'd be getting permitted.
I believe with the state that, that they had us pull it on the entire six forty, because that's, that's how they, they tie it back to that same, um, tax ID number and stuff.
Yes, sir. And that's why I asked it. Because then you'd come back to us, but then once you start mining, then there would be no reason, once we let you the first time on the six forty, why wouldn't we let you on the rest? Um, that was my point. Um, I was on the mining, uh, when we did our mining, um, ordinance. And I recalled that it was like, once you put the six forty in there, you could mine anything in the six forty, you'd have to come back to the county, but not the state. I just wanted to know if you knew that. Commissioner Rosskinek.
This, uh, Cody, this might be more of you, but, uh, here it says the legal description is all of section sixteen, two north, nine east, Black Hills Meridian, less right of way. So the hundred and sixty acres, if I understood it, this is the area. Is that legally described? And then, and then only a hundred acres of that's going to actually be mined? Is that legally described or, you know, what, is there marketable boundaries? So.
Uh, so, so what it is, um, sorry, Cody Sacks, Senior Planner. Um, the, the legal description that you see is the legal description of the property, because we can't, if it's not a broken off parcel, we can't say that this is the legal description. So they came in and proposed, um, the north, like the northeast quarter of section sixteen. Um, that's what they put. And, um, so that's what they would, they would have. So this hundred and sixty acres, they, they're basically allowed to mine the hundred and sixty acres in this northeast quarter. Anything past that, they'd have to come back into the Board of Commissioners, um, to get their, their approval on.
So each of those phases that are up there, are they marked, uh, corners marked on those phases?
No, I don't, I don't believe so. When I was out at the property, there's nothing that marks it. It's just what they're proposing. I think that's just what the applicant is, is showing you, like where, how they're going to, to move. And those are ten acre, ten, eleven acre chunks that they're going to do at a time. Because the way a permit works generally with, with the state too, is when you, you're allowed a certain amount, and then when you start moving, you have to reclaim-
Yep.
-that amount as you move. So you're not going to have a hundred and sixty acres of disturbance at one time. They have to, they'll do like ten acres, reclaim ten acres when they start moving on to the next ten acres.
Yeah, it's an ongoing process. You know, and, and one thing that it came up with, with like the, the surty and, and the bonding with the, with the reclaiming, the state has, has now changed that. Right now, I have a twenty thousand dollar CD that's in place, that's in the state of South Dakota and Sixty-three Industries joint, so that they have recourse if we don't, uh, live up, live up to our ex, or their expectations of doing the reclaiming like we promised. Um, next year, that goes to a hundred thousand. I believe in twenty twenty-seven, it go, goes to two hundred thousand, and twenty twenty-eight goes to three hundred thousand. So they're, they, they're recognizing and kind of adjusting that to go. That gives us a blanket, uh, um, you know, reclaim bond in right now for multiple locations, because we do operate in multiple locations with our mining. But they're recognizing now just to tighten, tighten things up and, you know, put feet, feet to fire and at least have some sort of recourse that they're going to start up, upping those.
Thank you.
So each of those ten acre phases are roughly six hundred and sixty feet by six hundred and sixty feet?
Yep.
Okay.
Cody?
So Cody Sacks, Senior Planner. Um, basically, what would happen if this permit got approved, um, there'd have to be conditions on it. The condition would read that the mining operation only be allowed in this northeast quarter of section sixteen. So anything after that, they'd have to come back in to amend.
Thank you. Commissioner Wyfembach, do you have any questions for Mr. Lipp?
Um, Chair, I, I, I've listened, and I'm listening well. And I, um, one of the comments that, you know, come up was that Corey was wrong in his prognosis. So I've listened to it. There's not been anything that has, uh, pointed out any wrongness on the planning commission. I think they've done their, their due diligence very well, understanding the area. Uh, one thing that we haven't spent a lot of time on, which is most important, because I think Commissioner Rosskinek alluded to the fact that you got a balancing of, uh, property rights here. Okay? So with that being said, we, we look at, we go back to, what are the property rights? What, what is the expectation of the community that is living there currently? What is the expectation of the, uh, the community that will be there? Um, what is, uh, Box Elder's, uh, future land use, uh, is in, is in direct alignment with the county's future land use? And so that, I, I think that, uh, that being said, and then you look at all the health and safety issues that have been, you know, that have been brought up, and they haven't been denied. Even the leasie here tells you, bike that, uh, th- those may be temporary. They're still there. Um, that's, that's how he explained it. They're, they may be temporary, but nobody's disputed the fact that those, uh, conditions are, are going to be there if this, uh, gravel pit is permitted. Um, with that being said, I've had, I have enough information to, to make my decision just based upon the, the relative facts that I've heard today in this meeting. And the fact is that, well, you know, the, the planning commission denied it. Our, our staff is denying it, which, you know, always there's, there's room for maneuvering. But, uh, when, when you got the leasie, that can't even deny the fact that there, these conditions are going to be there. Even if they're for four years, these people that live there in those houses never expected this. This would be something that, uh, is beyond just, if it would have been zoned or, or if there would have been, uh, something that would have alluded to the fact that you could have had something that detrimental in your community, there may, there may have been different decisions made. I think it will affect the future of Box Elder's growth. I think it will affect, um, the future of that, that particular community that's there. I wouldn't want to live in it. And I think that, uh, anybody involved wouldn't live in it. We haven't heard from one person. Uh, you know, even, even the leasie says that these conditions will prevail, though, even though they would be temporary. So I'm ready to make a decision. I, I, I would-
So Commissioner, you have no questions for Mr. Lipp?
No. No, I just wanted to have that. I mean, if he wants to respond to that, because in, you know, if I heard him correctly, I heard the fact that he said these conditions will be there, but they'll be temporary. But I want to give him the-
I, I think-
-opportunity to respond to that.
I think what I, what I was mainly, um, referring to there would be the, uh, temporary reduction, say, in property value. Now, from a environmental aspect and everything like that, with what we're doing in our operation, groundwater is not going to be an issue. Uh, the only constituent that possibly could get to the surface water drainage in there would be, uh, sediment, which we will work with, you know, us, our SWIPI plan or our stormwater pre- prevention plan to, to, to negate that. If the, uh, you know, i- if the, the reviewers of the SWIPI plan feel that my sixty, sixty-foot, uh, vegetative buffer is not enough, I mean, that's something that can be changed. Like I said, uh, or stated, the, uh, operation plan, the reclamation plan, and our, and our stormwater prevention plan are living, breathing documents. They can be changed to accommodate within reason.
So how many acres are you mining right now with gravel?
Currently that we're, we're mining in our, uh, what we call is our two-two-four pit in Meade County. Uh, I believe right now, we've got about forty-five acres open up there. Um, and it's in those, kind of like Cody, Cody alluded to, they're, they're in those various phases of mining and reclamation. Um, probably active mining, no more than ten acres open.
Okay.
You know, but, but there's pieces that are in reclamation. So it's, is it seeded yet? No. Um, we've been getting topsoil replaced, you know, it's, it's, it's an ongoing process, but yeah.
And I, I appreciate that, sir. The other thing is the LLC thing. Um, always, and you can ask the planning department with, uh, solar and wind that came up. The guy's like, you can't do anything with, I, I'm, I'm obligated no matter what on my LLC. Well, I have LLC, so you're only obligated as long as that LLC is open. We put those limited liability companies in there for a reason. So once that's gone, um, you're not held liable. So when it comes to mining, or it comes to solar, wind, or it comes to anything that's health, safety, and welfare, um, not that you do anything wrong with your LLC, but that for mining and those areas, um, and solar, that kind of freaks me out a bit, because- and solar, that kind of freaks me out a bit, cause then if it becomes a liability, um, Mr. Demersman can probably answer to that. Can you just drop that LLC and that obligation of any of that bonding or anything else is gone?
Well, the, well, the bonding is, i- i- in, in the case that we have with the state is, is a, is a joint held CD by the state and by us. So they would take ownership of it. So the state would end up with that CD.
Are those both LLCs that that joint operation that you did with the state is? Are that joint side?
Well, it's through, it's, it's owned by si- sixty-three industries and the state of South Dakota.
Okay.
The, the.
So this.
The surty, surty bond or CD that we have in place is that. It's joint, it's joint held.
So it wouldn't matter if it was federal, state or otherwise for LLC, isn't it different? I know for state and local, it is.
I, I can't comment on that.
Just, just, just a little bit of heads up.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Dur.
Brittany, I've got a couple of questions, going back to Commissioner Weifenbach. And I think it ties into Commissioner Ross Connect's questions, kind of everybody's. So we just went through a review of the comprehensive plan?
Correct.
And that got approved, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And where does this fit in the change in the comprehensive plan, this property?
So as part of that change for the comprehensive plan, our future land use map, uh, is incorporated in that. And in that future land use map, uh, the new incorporation, this would be a rural residential, which are three acre lot size minimums residential.
Okay. And that was just approved a few weeks ago by this board?
Correct.
Okay.
So on that follow-up, is there any, so Mr. Lipp said he's in Meade County. He is not in Pennington County mining at this time.
So Meade County does not have zoning, um, so their requirements are different than ours.
Yep.
Um, just some clarification, just on some comments, if I may.
Yes.
So use by rights are very different than conditional uses. Conditional uses are exceptions, um, based on certain criteria that you have to meet. So even though that this is an agriculture district and a mining permit is considered a conditional use under three-twenty, um, for this use, there is still certain criteria that you have to meet to make it make sense or, or have it be approved. So I just wanted to clarify that, that it is not a permitted use in agriculture. It is a conditional use with the mining permit, um, meeting specific criteria of that conditional use.
Thank you. So that answered Commissioner Ross Connect's question.
Madam Chair, one closing statement, let me. You know, this is tough, cause I really tried to look at both sides and be, uh, open-minded. But I had an issue in my district and I had a lot of neighbors that were in opposition to a, a planned unit development. And, and Commissioner Dur understood and then he supported, uh, where I was at. And, uh, I'm gonna have to, you know, um, today I'm gonna have to support his position on this because I just, there's just too much testimony, in my opinion, that, uh, I don't think we'd be listening to our constituents if, uh.
Okay. So we're not voting on this right now, guys. We still have, the applicants have two more speakers? Or how many do you have, sir?
Just one, I, I think, Madam Chairman.
Okay. If we could hear from that applicant?
Yeah, I'd like a five-minute break before.
Okay, five-minute break, sir?
And then I, I would, I'd be happy to.
Okay, let's have a five-minute break. Thank you. Okay. All righty, we're back from our recess. Mr. Demersman, if you'd come up, sir. State your name. If you would, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Michael Burke Demersman, uh, and, uh, I am a majority owner of, uh, of the section involved. And, uh, um, I know that the, I know of the character of the people involved that want to, uh, lease my gravel. I was born in New Underwood eighty-six years ago, and I've lived most of my life in Pennington and Meade County, except when I left for education or working on missile bases. And the principals in sixty-three have businesses in Box Elder. And, uh, um, Clyde has come back, Mr. Lipp has come back here. Uh, school of mines graduate. I think you have an advanced degree in hydrological, uh, environmental hydrology. So we're not people that are gonna come in and, uh, try and fix your, uh, your shingles or your driveway and move away. We've been here a while and, uh, I think we're entitled to the permit. And I will tell you why in a little bit. Uh, uh, I disagree very much with the, uh, recommendations made by our county employees. And usually I agree with them, but they said there's gonna be an increase in traffic. And they talked about because of this small operation, there would be have to, have to be changes in the, in the road. There's not an increase in traffic. You received a handout that showed that the traffic is actually half of what it is from one of the current suppliers. There may be suppliers further out that I don't even know about. So the idea that there's gonna be increased traffic, there's gonna be tremendous increase in traffic. There's, your, your roads in Pennington and Meade County are gonna be chewed up. They're gonna be chewed up tremendously. Not just gravel trucks, but, uh, concrete trucks that have a higher weight per axle. You're gonna have flatbeds full of iron and steel going in. This is one of the biggest projects since the Waihee Dam. And, and the thing that bothers me, I was not gonna get in, involved in this, didn't think it was necessary at all. And then this sent to me, this was circulated at Box Elder that told about the tremendous dangers, health risks, traffic, decreased property values, truck, uh, traffic damages to the roads, water contamination, uh, wildlife, conflict with the city's master plan to maintain expanded and beautiful Box Elder. I think I'm gonna contribute to the expansion and the beauty of Box Elder. And, uh, I'll tell you, uh, I'll tell you how. The, uh, uh, there's time limitations here and I, I won't go into all of the.
Sir, you get more time because you, the applicant also, um, there was three minutes per the other. So you are, um, basically the other.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. But what I was talking about is the hunger that may overcome people here. As far as the need to break this meeting, I wasn't talking about the limitation.
Oh, sorry.
The, uh, uh, we're not talking about Pete Lean and Sons. We're not talking about Summit. We're talking about ten acres at a time that will be open. Now, in one of the, uh, one of the slips that was provided by, uh, um, sixty-three, they're running from me, a couple of those were bigger than ten acres. In my contract with them, and Clyde has said, I can do it in ten acres. I don't have to have forty or fifty open. And, uh, so I wouldn't care if in the final run of this thing, that the, um, obtaining a special use permit, that there were limitations to that. I wouldn't care if there's a review in, in, uh, thirty-six months or so as to whether or not my contract with them should be continued or terminated. Time, time, time. Time is important. Am I, am I against the plan of Box Elder? Not one damn bit. I fit in it. I'm glad the mayor is here, but he can tell you that if I make any misrepresentations concerning my relationship with Box Elder. Box Elder has had access to my square mile.
Sir, sir, you need to talk to us.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Um, Box Elder has had access to my property for over, uh, three years to participate completely. The plan was in that property to try and keep it in one piece. And so that Box Elder would have planned and planned unit development. And there were people involved. Uh, we had one conference with, uh, a designer for, uh, Disneyland and several communities that are built as to what could be done with that property. Uh, we had a buyer for the property. But when money went from three percent to six and a half percent, our buyer disappeared. And I don't know how you're gonna maintain the, the, the whole, what we were trying to do for Box Elder unless, uh, uh, the defense department or somebody that's got deep pockets and he's got all the millions in his pockets and he doesn't have to borrow it. Otherwise, I'm afraid we're gonna have to break it up. So the federal government found that we have this anomaly of excellent gravel close by. And it can be used. And it should be used in very controlled provisions provided in a, uh, special use permit. I don't object to it at all. But so much of, of the fear that was generated by this type of thing is, is, uh, is upsetting because there's gonna be tremendous traffic there. Because this thing is bigger than most any development since the building of Waihee Dam. So the roads are gonna be ripped up. Pennington and Meade County, and I don't care how good Mr. Miller is on the, uh, Pennington County Highway Department. He can't solve these problems. You're gonna need money to solve these problems. And what my partial contribute, contribute to the, uh, uh, to Box Elder by this would be good. It would be good for me, it'd be good for Box Elder. Remember, a lot of you know that in, when you're talking about aggregate, if you're pulling it all the way up from Wausau, your transportation is worth more than the aggregate that you're selling. So transportation means a tremendous amount in the, in the cost of what you're doing. And here, the one, one of the suppliers, uh, that the same company is involved with in Meade County, their haul is twice as much. You notice where the haul is designated in yellow by these guys. It doesn't go by any schools. It doesn't mean there are gonna be any trouble. There's gonna be tremendous trouble because of the tremendous population increase. There's a lot of problems. And I'm not against, I feel that I'm part of the long-term program for Box Elder. And here's why. If Box Elder, I don't know if you've got a good, perhaps this one over here, uh, i- is better, uh, the one to my right, if that could be brought up for the people, but, uh.
Can we switch to screen, Cody, so that? Jones?
Cody, I'm a ludite. I don't know how to change all this stuff.
Jones looking at that, Mr. Demersman?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's the whole square mile with six hundred and forty acres. There are at least three distinct elevations on that. And for you to make the decision without putting your feet or seeing what difference those elevations provide, in the south, there's a, uh, a, a natural amphitheater. It's flat right up where they're going to start in the north, um, east quarter. Uh, but then it tapers off right away to where the, the first, uh, ten acres would be open. To make a decision that limits a valid use and the use that is provided for in, in the ag designation that is, at this time. And if it's limited in time, if it's limited in time, would be a big mistake. It, it says, it says what you say about development. If I should mention the state of South Dakota. Uh, there was a question that, Madam Chairman, that you had concerning, uh, uh, how much, uh, the, uh, state permit was for. It's, it's for the described, uh, uh, northeast quarter. It's for no more. So that's, that's what the permit for. On, on the record here, I'll, I'll make a pledge to you that, uh, if you grant this, as you know, if you grant this, that's not the end game. It may be in Meade County. It's not the end game here. Because if you go along with the state of South Dakota and give us our permit, then it goes to, um, your planning and zoning where we have to obtain a special use permit. Corey and I already disagree on a few things.
Cody.
But I think, I think if.
Cody.
Cody, excuse me. Cody and I agree and disagree on a few things. But if we were on the property together, some of these things could be resolved. I didn't know that this type of threat tactics were gonna come up. I didn't, I didn't understand that. Or maybe, uh, I, I think that Commissioner Drew's referred to the fact that, uh, we should have all been together earlier in this. That may be the case. Uh, but I was involved. But I, I will just say right here on the record, so it's a matter of, of record, that, uh, we will not, uh, we will not file a petition anytime in the future to enlarge our northeast quarter for the, for the use of gravel. I, I, I'll be on the record on that. And I'm sure if, if, uh, somebody wants to continue that, uh, they would have problems. The, uh, my cooperation with, uh, Box Elder has been extensive and long. And, uh, my minority partner says, do you realize all the money we could have had if you would have started selling this in pieces rather than try and keep it together for one unit development? And, and he may be right, but we did cooperate with Box Elder. Box Elder, um, if we have one of the, uh, pictures of one of the drainages, one of the, the two drainages, the primary drainses on the property, the one coming in from the middle on the east is right below that pond in Box Elder. And, uh, thank you. Uh, that's the whole of sixteen. The one coming in from the east, uh, will be the new sewer line across my property, although we haven't signed easements, signed easements yet. That would come across the property. And it is, uh, a great benefit to Box Elder because, uh, it's all gra- it'd be gravity feet. Box Elder now to serve that area has a lift station, which is expensive to build and to operate, as, as some of you are aware. The, um, the, the main line that goes up to the north to, uh, section nine has already been engineered completely. Thank you. By, uh, DGR, the engineers that were hired by Box Elder. So all the sewer preps are ready here. And we will, I assume, grant permission to Box Elder to bring the main line down that then goes through twenty-one and then connects with the, with the surface. I would hope that the bedding that they use for those sewers, pipes, uh, would, uh, would, would be gravel that we got right at the site. It would be a lot less expense for the, for the city as far as the hauling rates. The problem that we have on, uh, timing, 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 timing on a Box Elder is when will those be completed? Well, the mayor's here and maybe they have, since I talked to him last, have all their, uh, finance lined up for the sewer, but I doubt it. And the sewer, although the engineering is done, as far as I know, and the mayor will correct me if, if his line, if he's financing is lined up. But I don't think it is. And even if it was, you're talking about thirty or thirty-six months. If you put some kind of limitation on, on us, depending upon when the west half of that section is served, I think that would be acceptable and it would be, I know these are tough restrictions. But, uh, I knew that we would require, and I required tough restrictions in the contract that I have with these people concerning, um, the finish of the property. It's beneficial to me, of course, if we take the gravel out and we can finish it so that I have a flat area or a five or six or seven percent grade, so that I can then develop housing in the northeast quarter. But the whole west half, the whole west half does not have water, does not have sewer. If they had that in thirty months or thirty-six months, I know what that would do to my permit. They will be in a position where they will, uh, annex and my, and, uh, my permit would be gone. But if, if it happens sooner, great. Then I could take what, what little area. Then I could take what little area that had been developed by me by taking the gravel out would be flat and I'd be able to develop the northeast also. But the total west half of section 16, I agree completely with the zoning. But when, when 30 months, 40 months? In that period of time, I could have excellent product delivered in Box Elder and for the feds at a shorter run, at a shorter run than now exists. Pennington County and Mead County are are going to be in trouble on the roads, there isn't any doubt about it. I wish I was younger, I'd like to lobby it for you with the state of South Dakota. I used to do those type of things. But so if the sewer, the sewer line is not going up to section nine above you to pick up manure from cattle, it's going up there because people are going to be up there. And that sewer line will go at some time. But when, but when? I don't know when. The counties deserve help that they're not getting now because last year the excise tax for the state of South Dakota went into our general fund was over $216 million excise fund. Think what's going to happen in the next 36 to 40 months on Ellsworth Air Force Base and around it. That type of money will be going into the general fund of the state of South Dakota. These two counties are entitled to part of that. Maybe you're always already working with the governor from Mead County who has a smart lieutenant governor or the governor's economic development fund. I don't know, but I assume that some of those contacts are being made. I know that Box Elder has people who have made contacts with the feds and have traveled, but we have to do something because the tremendous influx is going to affect all the things. The dust, the roads that have no sidewalks for the kids from the schools. These things are going to be happening, but but we're not hurting it a bit. We're shorting the travel line. We're willing to meet all the requirements, the state of South Dakota on air quality, whatever, whatever they come up with. I understand Mr. Dur's position, excuse me, Commissioner Dur's position, and that's that Box Elder is his area. But a lot of no's came up before anybody knew some of the details of what's happening or the time limitations that people that own the property would be willing to live with. If you guys say no and don't go with the state of South Dakota, I think it is a very, very, very bad image for economic development. If, I wish, I wish you could all, if you postponed, come out and see the property and look at the different levels of the property. It would be, it would be very, it would be very helpful. If you go along with the state of South Dakota, if we're in Mead County, maybe that'd be the end of it, it's not. You've given tremendous power to the people that grant special use permits. So if you say, okay, we'll go along with the state for now, but you've got to go do your special use permits. A lot of the stuff that came up here would be answered because you've got some really tough regulations that we would have to live with. And if we don't, and I've got a pretty tough contract, so I want your tough regulations and I don't have to enforce anything then. So it would be very, very beneficial if, if I could get you on the land, but it would also be very appropriate if you say we will allow this to proceed so that we can determine whether or not there should be obtained special use permits for 10 acres of time on that quarter. And if you hobble, hobble us at this time, that's, that's going to be, you're not the only ones that will be aware of that. A lot of people will. This is a valid use, I'm willing to live with all the property restrictions and I'm willing to terminate the time. And I'm willing to do anything I have to to help the city of Box Elder, I think, even if it increases or shortens my time, if they, if they actually get water and sewer on the west half of section 16. I haven't talked at all on the the comments I intended to make, I intended to go over some of the errors in more detail about the holes from planning zoning, but if you decide properly, I'll still get a chance to work with them. And they might, they might sink me and they might help me and I appreciate your time, but I think you had to know the limitations that we're willing to live with that would be a reasonable use of our land and development. And thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Demersman. Have anybody else that would like to speak out in the audience that hasn't spoken? Okay, we'll go to the commission, anybody haven't spoke? Commissioner Drew.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to, I can't have been quiet through this process listening, but I will state that when the applicant initially filed through the planning office to get their conditional use permit, which was a staging permit to stage equipment at that point in time, the community that is, you know, here today, that alerted them that there was going to be a future use for that when you're talking about a conditional use permit to stage on that property. So at that point in time, they showed up at the planning meeting and then knowing that there was another conditional use permit coming for the mining operation. You know, they asked the planning board not to consider the staging equipment conditional use permit and wait until they could have the mining permit heard. And that was the most recent planning commission meeting, I believe that was the 23rd of June. So the talking about everybody having the same information, so a lot of the questions that were asked here today by the board, the testimony from the people that live in the area, the testimony from the mayor and the major players in that community to include the applicant, that planning commission was presented with the very same information. So the opposition to this permit and, you know, they're aware of, you know, some of the intent that maybe this would be a short term project. And but they still have the same concern, so it's not alleviated by the scope of the project. The concerns are about the location of the project. So we get back to, and we talk about, you know, zoning and, you know, it's correct. Mead County doesn't have a zoning and so it makes it a little bit difficult for them to come in when the state issues a permit or says you can do A, B, and C if you don't have zoning districts. Zoning in Pennington County gives the county protection to have discussions over that land use. And so under Pennington County or zoning ordinance, under the mining permit 320, it requires mining operations in an agricultural district to obtain a mining permit and meet certain criteria to include compatibility with existing and future land use. So everybody that's been opposed has talked about, and the mayor did, about what their future land use is. So you have opposition from the Box Elder Chamber of Commerce, the city of Box Elder, the school board, Mead County also sent a letter from the commission related to, you know, the use of roads and their concerns over the roads. And so the planning department, planning office has gone through what is in our ordinance, what is in our comprehensive plan, looked at the land use of Box Elder and what they're proposing for future land use. None of this fits and to include the comprehensive plan that we just approved, which Brittany spoke to about future land use in this area and how it's zoned with residential three acres or less. We talk about adequate infrastructure and we already know, based on the reasons for denial for this permit from the planning office and concerns from the highway department, it doesn't have adequate infrastructure to meet our ordinance. And so it's about road standards and infrastructure, getting back to it was asked at the planning commission meeting. If a developer were to come in and develop this property and come in and do that, then you would have a developer's agreement that you would go in and say, okay, you want, let's just, you're going to improve a section line that's unimproved, okay, then you have to improve that to get this development through. Then you've got to build that to county standards. The fact that the road is currently seeing high traffic, it's been talked about that we have tremendous problems with our roads. We have, going to have a tremendous increase in traffic. That's all a given, it doesn't lessen the fact that this is going to increase and have bigger issues on our roads with that traffic hence Mead County's concern. It's been discussed about protection of water quality, public health and safety, and I think that's part of what the opponents are speaking to, and I think it's legitimate concern. And the other thing was discussed at the planning commission meeting, which was not discussed here, pretty much all the testimony has been the same. One thing that was discussed, one of the residents out there brought up about the contamination and Commissioner Drews asked the question, I believe Myron Mann spoke to contaminated wells. And so was a question in this area, is there an issue with PFOS contamination? And there is, the PFOS contamination from Box Elder from Ellsworth Air Force Base goes all the way down to the Cheyenne River. And so it follows in fact, I mean, it goes down the creek into New Underwood where properties and wells have been contaminated and abatements of that property, you know, that's currently planned under Ellsworth and Ellsworth Authority to look at some of those. We talk about, again, the incompatibility with land use plans, it's inconsistent with designed, designated rural residence, commercial and agricultural uses in the county and the city of Box Elder and our own comprehensive plans. It has infrastructure deficiencies, access to roads do not meet ordinance 14 standards for industrial use. Public health and welfare safety has been brought up and negative impacts to water in the residents nearby. And so the one thing about zoning, and I think getting back to what Commissioner Roskinak talked to, for example, when the county got involved in a lawsuit years ago over the Kroll pit. And then, you know, in fact, since then, the county came back and you made amendments to our ordinances relating to mining so that you would have more impact and control over how future operations went that were not grandfathered in. And so, you know, it's based on statute that the board has clear legal authority denied this mining permit to break the county's land use integrity, infrastructure standards and the welfare of our residents. And as a former school board member out at New Underwood, you know, I'm listening to, you know, the district that I serve, I'm listening to school board members. I'm listening to the leadership in the city of Box Elder, I'm listening to future development and growth concerns with the Chamber of Commerce and I'm listening to the residents that live out there that would be impacted by this. And so it's not an outright use for mining in this district, you have to meet certain criteria. That criteria was evaluated and addressed by the planning commission at the recommending of our planning staff and it was a five to do vote no. And based on that, I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to move to deny with prejudice mining permit COMP 25-001 as it is not in harmony with existing and future land uses, lacks adequate access and infrastructure and impacts to water quality are undetermined.
There a second? There a second?
I'll make a substitute.
Second from Wyffenbach?
Yep.
And then a substitute, Mr. Roskinak.
You know, I've heard some really good testimony and I'm on the fence and I think we owe it to the applicant, at least myself, that I'd like to do a personal site visit, just and I'll meet with the neighbor, I'll meet with the mayor, but.
What's your, what's your motion?
That might be my substitute motion to continue until I can actually get out there and put my feet on the ground.
Okay. There's been a motion, a substitute for a continuance. First, is there any discussion on the continuance?
Yes. So, you know, it's been, you know, it's been talked about, about the elevation of the property and, you know, what the property looks like. And elevation is not an issue. If you're talking about, you know, somebody buying the property for future development, what they might do with that to put in and, you know, the land use for residential in future use. But the elevation of the property and, you know, what the layout of the property looks like in my mind is mute. If it was flat and it had, you know, a quarter section of flat ground that could have been farm ground. And if it was farm ground, my opposition would still be the same. It's not about the terrain, it's about the use and the fact that none of this complies with our comprehensive plan. It does not fit the future land use of Box Elder. And it is a noncompliance as submitted with multiple areas for our conditional use permit. It's got nothing to do with the elevation of the property or what the property looks like.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
So I'm going to support the substitute motion to continue. And I would encourage that any commissioners that have not been out there to go out and view this property. And I think there's other conditions that could be put on this to make this more amenable. One of those would be to need to bring 151st Street at first mile north of 1416 to county ordinance 14 to allow the traffic in and out of that area. They've already stated they're not talking about 40 feet depth, they're talking about 15 max. And no land other than that southeast quarter or the northeast quarter of the 640 acre track would be mined. And so I, I think they deserve the right to be able to show the property to the commission. I've been out there, I've been, I've walked some of that property. It gives me a whole different picture when I'm on it as compared to looking at the maps. And so I would encourage support for that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drew.
Follow up. So, you know, getting back to the gravel pit in general, just talking about gravel pit, which has been mentioned by the individuals that live out there. So, and I, you know, and I did testify at the planning commission in opposition to this. I have a gravel pit that, you know, from my front deck, you know, I could look to the southeast and see the gravel pit. I see the dust when it's kicking up, it's about, you know, as the crows fly, it's probably three fourths of a mile. But anyway, it, my neighbors have it, it's been there for decades, it's no issue in my community. It's pretty rural. That, getting back to the fact that we have not permitted any new gravel pits under our new ordinance in a this close to a residential area. And again, I get about the land use aspect of it. I'm glad that my neighbors that have been great neighbors of mine for decades have the ability to have a gravel pit on their property. You know, I've even on my own land, you know, I've got gravel on my own property. Maybe at some point in time I'll decide to have somebody mine that. My kids would be opposed to it because I kind of have a dirt compound with my family out there, so. Anyway, but, you know, getting back to this, it's just, it's the fact that it does not fit
She said she landed.
any criteria in our ordinance. And, you know, I'm not looking to make exceptions to this. And because once you, and getting back to what I think I've listened to Commissioner Adcock and on another matter, when you're talking about getting into contracts and agreements, all contracts and agreements could be amended. And so the initial discussion that got the concern of the landowners was the fact that this was talked about to be a four year project and that they were only going to go a certain depth. And then when it comes back, you know, the depth of the project is, you know, increased from what it was initially discussed. And then when you get into, once you go ahead and you say, if you meet this criteria and we're going to open it up and we're going to approve this permit. And then it goes back to the fact that we have standing right now based on what was in front of us to make a denial. And then when you start putting conditions to that and you open those conditions up, and then at some point in time, you say, I want to change some of those conditions, I want to do something different. And everybody's going to say, well, I'm operating based of what the conditions you said when the permit came in. And then it makes it very difficult to unwind that and pull it back. And so, you know, again, the topography, walking the property, I have been out there. I mean, I'm quite familiar with my district, I went to and drove out there myself to look at it, I didn't walk on the property. I can look to those residents to the left, I can look to the residential property to the north, I can look at the future land use. And I can look at what the mayor spoke to, and I do know that the growth going east is going to go east. And you have to have that opportunity to go. Talking to our highway superintendent about, you know, the gravel pit and that type of thing. The one, getting back to. The one, getting back to how long a gravel pit can go. About ten, fifteen years ago, you know, I heard somebody, uh, even my neighbors talk about the fact that you know, that gravel pit out by me had hit its lifespan and dried up. And that was about a conversation fifteen years ago. They just opened up a, another area over there that the highway department is going to operate out of. And, uh, you know, our highway superintendent on a pit that was believed to have been dried up is now got, you know, another decade plus of opportunity for gravel coming out of it. And it is a very small land mass area, nothing compared to this size. So anyway, I'm just going to vote no on this substitute motion and, uh, that's where I'm at.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
My follow up is, and I'm not saying which way I'm going to vote. I'm just saying I think I owe it uh, as much discussion as there have been here today to at least take the opportunity and put my feet on the ground. Because you, uh, it's just pretty hard to look at a, a map with a horizontal plane and not see the neighbors and not see the area. And so uh, I just ask for that opportunity that I can sit there and personally go look at the property, no more different than this, the solar, uh, fields and the, uh, winterments.
Thank you. Commissioner Wyffenbach?
No comment.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question of planning?
Commissioner Dur.
Whichever, whichever one can answer it. Uh, I'm curious, since ordinance three twenty, I think is what it's called, uh, was adopted. Have we had any other, uh, gravel pit applications? To, uh, new gravel pits or, I think we've had some expansion, but we had
So, so Cody Sack, Environmental Planner, uh, Pete Lean expanded their, um, uh, I don't want to call it their Wasta pit, but they have a pit a couple of miles south of Wasta. And then Western Construction, two years ago in twenty twenty-three, um, opened one on Trask Road out north of, north of Wall.
Okay. So it's been very limited, those that have been since ordinance three twenty was put into effect.
Correct. And they're all in very rural areas.
Thank you.
Uh, and then, sorry, one more thing. If, um, with that motion, do you have a date, uh, to continue to? I believe the next meeting would be the fifteenth.
Right. That's the next meeting.
That would be my motion to take it to the next meeting.
To continue.
Could be made that it worked, you know, the timing works and the date works.
Okay.
Oh, question. I'm ready to go.
Um, I'd like to be able to speak before you call the question. Thank you. So, um, bottom line, I've heard both sides and people know me, I have to see the facts for myself. I have not been out to this area. I have not looked at the area and you already know where I'm going then. Um, I would like to look at the area. I'm listening to the Box Elder and looks, listening to both sides of this issue. Um, but people know me probably good enough by now. I'd like to see and put eyes on this project. I always have. Anything I've done, I always like to put eyes, ask Jason. He usually has to be the guy that takes me out on these projects. Whether it be a PUD, a mining or something else, because I like to know all the facts. Um, I don't like the applicants, no offense to be there. Um, I like the planning commission and then read the, read the information and, and figure it out by myself. Um, with the planning department and then I trust but verify, which Jason already knows and Brittany by, uh, what he tells me and then I check. And I'll check with mining companies. I'll check with other people through the state. Um, but bottom line is I would, um, like to continue it as well, just to put eyes on it. Um, I've listened to the testimony today. I believe health, welfare, um, of Penney County is good. I believe in property rights. I also see, like to see, um, how far this mining pit is going to go. It's on the, on the east side of this property. How much is it going to affect the west? I also have questions about how big a mining pit you can have an egg before you have to get, or how big a pit you can have in egg before it has to come into, um, there's just a lot of questions unanswered here and I don't think I need to sit here for twenty more minutes and ask those questions. It's not to vote one way or another. At this point, I am listening to both sides. I think, uh, future land use, I'm going to be up straight. I've never trusted future land use in a certain extent, except that if there's already residential there, you wouldn't put in industrial by it. Um, that's just common sense, whether you be a planning commissioner or a commissioner. But I still would like to look at it. Um, see how far away, look what the operation has been before, to be fair. So, um, in this motion, I will probably, um, offer, uh, with the other two commissioners to continue it, to know all the information. Um, just so you know, I'm not against or for at this point, I'd like to know the facts.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Wyffenbach.
If, if this, if this motion approves, I would like to have a, uh, the state's attorney's office weigh in on who needs to be present. Because, uh, if you go, uh, both parties should be present, I believe, if you go visit the land. Uh, the opposing side and the, and the, uh, the side, the applicant side. So just, I would like them to weigh in on, on that if, if, if this motion rolls through.
So if I visit the site, I'd have to go by myself, otherwise, um, I need to bring, so I can't have someone take me to the site. Commissioner, or sorry, State's Attorney Megan.
Uh, Megan Creer with the State's Attorney's Office. I was actually just discussing this. If you all want to go out and visit the site, it would need to be noticed as an official meeting. Um, in order to comply with state statute. Um, if only two of you go at a time, you wouldn't necessarily have to notice it up. However, um, because it sounds like there's more than two of you that would like to go and see the site. Um, I would just recommend that you set it as an official meeting and go out there, um, with it noticed up to the public.
Okay. And for me, it was just me with, and I didn't know if anybody, Commissioner, um, just a sec. I didn't know if anybody else wanted to go out there and I apologize, Commissioner Wyffenbach. Um, I never thought that everybody else was going out there. I thought other people saw it, so I apologize. So go ahead, Commissioner Wyffenbach.
Madam, Madam Chair, I also wanted to make sure that you were covered in ex parte communications. So
Yes, sir.
This is a property rights issue. Uh, and having people there, like say, who've already do not want to, who've already requested denial, which is our planning department. Um, having them there with you doesn't seem fair to the applicant or the opposition. So I'm not going to support this motion, by the way.
Okay. I, I respect that and I will also respect the State's Attorney's, um, position. But I don't go out there so Jason can tell me how to vote. Uh, people know that, you know, you're not going to tell me how to vote. I don't care which side you are. Um, I'm going to do it by the facts. You can ask the planning department or anybody who's ever watched me, but I also understand the rules and regs for having meetings and other people want to see it. I also understand the rules and regs that Wyffenbach, anytime I went and visited with anybody or took anybody out with me, I've always um, disclosed that. So, um, I want to follow the rules. So if we want to set a um, continuance to July fifteenth, we also can work with the staff to figure out when a site visit, visit can be done. And then if the public needs to know about that, we also can make sure they're in the know.
So Cody Sack, Senior Planner, I would say that if you guys or if the board, um, chooses to go out there, um, more than, I believe Megan said three. Um, I would recommend that you move it to the first meeting in August, because that would have to be, um, published and notified. So I don't think we could do that in this two weeks span before the next, next meeting. So I'd say the first meeting of August, if you're not going to go out individually.
What is the first commission meeting? August what?
August fifth.
August fifth, would you be okay with August?
That would work better for me.
Okay.
And I've got one more.
Okay, hold on just a sec. Anything else? Okay, Commissioner Ross.
Sure. So when Mr. Demersman was up there speaking, he was holding a piece of paper, which I don't see in my packet, that evidently, uh, was a document that was a lot of it's just a color, one page, I just, uh,
Cody.
Cool. Cody Sack, Environmental Planner, or Senior Planner. Um, I believe what that is, is, uh, uh, I believe he stated it was a flyer that was going around Box Elder. Uh, if it wasn't sent to the planning department, we wouldn't have that.
Oh, I'd just like to have a copy, that's all.
And then I guess while I'm up here too, I wanted to clarify something. Uh, Mr. Demersman was talking about a special permitted use after the, after the mining permit. The mining permit is what would allow that, uh, would, would allow the mining operations. So the conditions would be put on the actual mining permit. So if the mining permit was approved, it would, it would stop at the mining permit. There's no other special permits that would be required after that.
Okay, thank you. So we are voting on the continuance on August fifth. All in favor say, well, let's do a roll call. Commissioner Drews.
Aye.
Commissioner Dur.
No.
Commissioner Hadcock is aye. Commissioner Ross Connect.
Aye.
Commissioner Wyffenbach.
No.
So be a three to two continuance till August fifth. Thank you all for coming today. Um, public comment does matter. Um, again, thank you for coming. Uh, we will make that public, uh, when that, um, official meeting is. Next is meetings from committee reports. We have, um, yeah, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Commissioner Drews, you're first.
So, um, planning commission, we've dealt with that today. I was not, uh, available for the complete health center board. I believe that Commissioner Ross Connect was there. And so I would ask him for his comments when it gets to his turn. That's all I have.
Okay, Jerry Dur, Healthcare Trust Board.
I've got nothing.
Weed and pest?
Nothing.
Alternative energy?
Nothing.
Okay. Uh, Deb Hadcock, Penny County Housing and Black Hills Council, me and Wyffenbach weren't here. Penny County Housing and redevelopment. So, um, as you see, we talked about the new, um, Tonya that was going to be on the board if we guys approved it. We're also moving on the RAD. And we're also looking at moving, uh, using the two million, um, from Pennington County for, um, the Pennington County redevelopment for, um, already site in Rapid City. So Ross Connect, you're up.
Uh, we did have a Pennington County Council of Aging meeting on the twenty-sixth and I expressed uh, concerns of the commission relative to the request. And that we needed, uh, especially on Meals on Wheels, that we needed more information to, uh, look at their overall financial situation. Uh, so, uh, George said that he would get that. I told him, timing is of the essence to get that information to us. Uh, he did mention that he, they do about two hundred and fifty thousand meals a year in Rapid City proper. And at about a dollar each is what they try to break even at, that'd be two hundred and fifty thousand. I think their request was for twenty eight thousand for two, or twenty five thousand for two thousand twenty-six, but, uh, I, I stressed the importance of, uh, we needed, you know, more information to make a prudent decision. Uh, you know, the question was asked like how this group got started. And I think probably how it got started is that the commission at that time recognized that this group of people, seniors in particular needed, uh, some assistance from the county and the commissioner's probably going, oh, what do we know about it? So what they did is they designated a group of stakeholders that would be uh, that would probably have the knowledge that they would be looking for in the first place. And the stakeholders would be the senior centers in Pennington County, uh, be some state government, some federal government, and then of course the county. So, uh, I asked each one of them to reach out to the commissioners and tell them, are you with the senior sin- uh, senior center? Are you with, uh, South Dakota Social Services? Just so that they could probably answer questions that I'm not going to be able to answer up here. So that's kind of where we went there. We will have a follow up meeting in September the twenty-fifth and, uh, I just, uh, told everybody to reach out and any support that they could give for the requests that they submitted this year, that they reach out to each commissioner and, uh, provide additional information, especially George with Meals on Wheels. Complete Health. Uh, I did mention to them that there was nobody present at the budget hearing. Uh, Tim said that he had wrong date on his calendar and therefore he wasn't here. They, uh, did mention that, uh, probably being subsidized by the federal government, they're trying to cut back on their, uh, uh, pro- projected spending to the tune of about six hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred. Some of the ideas, and I'll just go over some of them, the closure of the General Beetle Clinic, which would be about fifty thousand. Cease all travel, uh, reimbursement, twenty-five thousand. Elimination of one community health worker, forty-three thousand, five hundred, elimination of Medicaid health. Home worker, one full-time employee, about forty-five thousand. Freeze on all lift rides, uh, estimated savings, ten thousand. Medicaid formula adjustments, limited access to medications for patients, forty-five thousand. Renegotiate KT contract, twenty-four thousand. I've got a copy, but you know, that, that comes with about seven hundred thousand. And so I, I told them that I highly encourage someone to get, uh, back with the commission relative to what they if they're going to ask for a hundred and fifty thousand, ask for a hundred and thirty thousand. We need, uh, you know, to speak some, to me, somebody in person to really show that the they care. I guess I would consider the grant. And then I've asked Jordan and we talked about this, uh, the last meeting. So, uh, under our total expenditures on, uh, I believe it's item four fifty-four grants to other entities, there's two million eighty thousand, five sixty uh, requests. And I'd like a breakdown of each one of those and what they're asking for. And if we want to go back ten years, I, I don't have a problem with that, but that, uh, as I told the Pennington County Council of Aging, this is what we're competing against for dollars. And each one of those are going to have to be heavily supported, uh, as we've got the process going forward. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Wyffenbach, do you have anything to share on your committees?
Commissioner Wyffenbach has left soon.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on committees? If not, motion to adjourn?
Or move.
Moved by Drews, second by Dur. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.